Is it like an abnormal amount?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
I don't think we would break too much, but as long as you get on there. It's getting worse. We own the car.
Let's do it alright. We're gonna let it rip alright. Sounds good. So, uh, welcome back everyone, this is night three uh, of three parts, of a three-part series to go through the entire budget. Thank you for those who saw the first two meetings, either in person or on YouTube. You know, technology is good, but it's not perfect, and it's good to see faces, so that's nice to, to pull off. So tonight, we've got Glenn with Billings and Grounds, Liz will tackle the town clerk's budget, Orion will handle the planning, and then I'll be on administration, town manager, Megan will be here for finance and insurance, I'll talk about GA, county schools, debt, and special assessments. So, um, you know, time of, you know, if we can go faster, and I don't get one of these from Mark, we'll be doing okay, so. So, uh, I think things have gone well the first two nights, and we'll, we'll keep it rolling tonight. So first up, Glenn's with us to talk about Billings and Grounds.
Okay.
So, big, the big, the big ticket here is, this is a hard one to talk about because we're moving things from other departments into here. So what we did is we moved the building repair maintenance lines to, to this part of the budget. So there were already pre-existing lines in home safety building, in public works, in this building's budget. And we moved those, those maintenance and repair lines to this section. The reason for that was, it's pretty obvious when you start thinking through. You have someone who's responsible for taking care of these buildings, but every time they needed to get funds expended to fix up the building, they would have to go to another department head to then say, can I fix the door? Can I, so it became this sort of odd situation where the person who needed to do the repairs was sort of going through layers of bureaucracy and didn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. So, we've centralized all those into one budget, but we're still keeping them within the lines of each department or each building. So, you know, town office, repair maintenance have its own, its own budget, Harbor Masters Building and so forth. The idea of this is really, again, we moved them, uh, the contractual expenses to supply expenses because the bulk of what Glenn has been doing has really, and Matt, um, have been really on their own. They haven't been bringing in contractors to complete projects, they've been completing themselves. So largely it's supplies, it's, it's wood, it's paint, it's tile, it's flooring. They're, they're basically getting the raw materials and putting things together. There are instances where we're bringing contractors, you know, whether it's a locksmith, or electrical, or things that are beyond the scope of what we can handle in-house. But I think, you know, Glenn would, they try to do as much as they can in-house. Now it does not help us to get things done, um, on a much more cost-efficient basis. But timeliness, I mean, we, there's a problem, we file a work order, the work order goes to Randy who works with Glenn. The work order is generated, and then Glenn turns that into a completed project. So, that's how we handled the, the closet. When Liz went through, uh, starting to move us into allowing license plates here at the town office. The closet that most of you don't get to see, but right next to the counter, which is sort of a multipurpose counter, uh, closet. That was something that, you know, Liz asked Glenn if we could put some shelves in there and make that into a space for the license plates. And that's something that definitely under lock and key, and has to, you know, special things. But that was done in about a week, 10 days' time, done. If we had a contractor doing that, we'd be waiting, and we'd be paying a lot more for it. So, those are the projects we've had, but that was just the most recent example to stand out. And then in terms of other parts of this, the mowing contracts are in this budget, uh, but we, secretaries in parks are sort of their own animal. And Billings and Grounds will be the, the department that's responsible for mowing. And we talked about those, the distinction of the different areas that mow. So, this, Billings and Grounds, Glenn and Matt in particular, are the ones who are gonna be on the mowers here. Harbor Masters Building, uh, the fire stations, although, you know, Jason obviously takes care of that when he can as well. But, and RES. So, and then the last thing is a vehicle lease payment. So, uh, just to sort of walk you through this year, um, you know, we started the budget in July. Glenn, at that point, after July, he had been somewhat integrated with Public Works, and so rather than pulling someone away from Public Works right away and saying, well, here's your own department, and figure it out and fix everything right away without any help to do so. I tried to go a little bit slower, um, because obviously we're in the middle of project season, and we had an aggressive schedule for road construction last summer. So, uh, Glenn, we sort of slowly peeled him away. We hired Matt, who was, uh, had now handled all the cleanings and, and also assisting in, in some of the repairs and so forth. He came on board in September, October, and that's what really we started to figure out, how is this, how is this gonna work on a day-to-day basis? And it was at that same time we launched our work order system. So the work order system launches, Matt comes on board, and so we're really about six, seven months into working with this. And, you know, I think it's working quite well, I think. For the work orders, it's actually been more, it's been an easier transition because it's new than it was for, for Public Works. But, you know, we're getting more things done now than we did probably in the first, you know, eight months. You know, if, if it's been six months since that started, I'd say the whole year before that, if you take all the projects we completed and multiply them by two, we still got more done the last six months with this system than we were in the old system. Which we need to do with these buildings that are getting older. So, in part of that, what became evident, you know, pretty quickly is, there's no means for this person to get from A to B to C. Uh, we wanna clean these buildings, we wanna, you know, have, uh, tools and, and the like to be able to do those things. And we have two people, uh, who are doing so. And so, it became evident pretty clearly is that, is a need for, um, you know, the right vehicle to take care of that. So, we used one of the old cruisers to be, um, one of those, um, uh, vehicles. But, the, the issue remained is, and the need for a van. A van that can lie to bring your tools with you. Uh, again, this is sort of a, you're sort of on the run, you're never really stationed in one location. Might be a problem with the library, might be a problem here, so you need to be ready at all times to fix whatever's in front of you. And if you're running across town all the time getting tools, it's not very efficient. So, that was something that Glenn and I have discussed for a few months now at this point. And the sense was, it's something we really need to be putting in the budget to, to handle it the right way. Uh, there've been some other, you know, ways to sort of, other vans and other things to look at, but this is the place for that conversation, so.
So you're gonna have two vehicles, not one?
Two vehicles, so one would be the, the old Explorer that we had, originally was gonna be the vehicle for here. And then the second vehicle would be this van, which would have the ability to, you know, carry larger lumber and, and larger items, and then stuff inside the cab, or inside the back of the van as well. But it's a net one person, one vehicle, that's the one that's in the budget.
So, roll the toolbox, because we don't really have a place to store everything, because, I mean, if you keep it separate from Public Works and whatnot, we have everything in our place at all times.
How much tools are there actually needed for this position? I mean, is it enough to sell a full-size van?
No.
Or is it?
You know, you show up on a job site and don't have what you need, and you know what it's like doing mechanical stuff, too. It's always that one little thing you need, and if you've got your toolbox with you, you can complete what you need to, you know.
Yeah.
And then we can come on it slowly, but, I mean, we all get tools when we need them, and then so often we got them again, you know.
And we're purchasing, we're planning on purchasing something new or used, or?
This is, this is budgeted as if it's buying new. And this is, you know, the, this portion of a lease payment, so, uh, you know, if we're buying something used, it'd have to be a different. I was trying to get a smaller, smaller impact in this budget as possible. And then obviously, this is something I think we're gonna be doing. With this department, I see being something that's going to continue on and on.
Sure.
So, we're always gonna have building maintenance needs. I don't see us going away from the idea of a van and the need of a van. So.
I guess part of what I was wondering is if it, if a van isn't necessarily the best vehicle, because we could, if, if Jason, or the fire chief is always gonna have a truck, and he updates that every three years, and wants a new truck every year just for reliability's sake, et cetera. And it's got a plow on it, why don't we just roll that at the end of the three-year cycle, roll that into this position? Because we don't necessarily need the reliability there, but it's still entirely capable vehicle, and we've already taken the hit on depreciation.
Right.
So, I don't think we need to necessarily take the hit on two vehicles with depreciation, yeah.
The only problem I got with that is that we really need it covered. We've got tools in the back, and we're inside, and it's that snow and it raining, you know.
Smoke a cap on it?
Yeah.
And drive a cap truck all day.
Got a toolbox.
I mean, we can do that too, but we need something with tools, small tools, big tools, that we can tie down that type of.
Sort of where I was going with Jimmy Aldous gets done, I mean, he's had that tractor, it's like his own personal one. And unless we're gonna give it to him as a retirement present, you know, we, we could roll that in and let the highway that uses something that needs to be more reliable have them work into something.
Yeah, we could buy one of those big toolboxes in the back.
Anyway, just a pooper thought, I'm sort of in the same mindset, but.
It's just, again, one more thing that we gotta take care of, and we already can't take care of our stuff, so.
Well, that's, that's the point of this one, right? Is to have, this is, these are the people who are taking care of the stuff we have, so. And if, if we can find a way to do that for, for less money, or, you know, with that, without that new, new vehicle depreciation, I'm, I'm definitely open to that idea, you know, maybe start with something used, or start with something that's different ways to get there. The challenge is, you know, we, we have to find a way to, we gotta buy something, I guess, if I, if I want. We have to get a vehicle so they can get around and do it, do what we're asking them to do. So, I, I think if we can, if we can accomplish both, if we can accomplish the need to get something in the short term that gets us around without sort of the, that up, that cost, that upfront cost, whether it's lease down.
Currently, what tools can fit in an Explorer that would fit in a van?
Well, I mean, you would.
Time to work out, if we stuff stuff in there, but then if we gotta go get some, you know, fine boards eight feet long, or a sheet of plywood, or a piece of sheetrock, we don't have anything to do with.
Probably better in a truck, actually, right? She, sheetrock and stuff?
Yeah, a van is the best, because you can fit up to like 12, 14-foot stuff inside if you need to, between the seats, and the other way was, uh, because I'm, I was self-employed for 27 years, I know about spending money on stuff you don't need, but the a toolbox, uh, body to go on a truck is, if you get one of the side boxes, and then you got one in the middle to do a bunch of big tools and supplies, those are $6,500 to $12,000 for a body to go on a truck, so. I mean, just a cap isn't that much, I realize, but, and they get, actually handle tools that's quite pricey.
Yeah, ours wasn't that expensive, but we have a lower-end one, I guess.
Yeah. There, well, the prices are all a little bit, a few I've looked at, but, pretty pricey.
I mean, I think everyone does agree, at least, that we do need a vehicle. There's no doubt about that, especially to make your job easier and get as much done as we have. This is how we take the smallest hit on it.
That's, yeah, and that, my thought was, okay, cost, high cost, yes, but in terms of budget impact, this was the cheapest way I could do it because we're spreading that cost out. Now, you're still buying $60,000, you know, by the time you get through everything. You know, you're buying a vehicle with more value than if you bought something used, but in terms of the, the individual budget impact of this budget, I thought, well, if we spread the lease payment over four years or five years, then we can, you can sort of spread the pain over a few different budgets as opposed to one. But, I, I hear you saying, right?
Yeah.
John, what size van are you talking about that would be $60,000?
Sadly, not much of one.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, I presume you mean sort of the commercial van, you see a lot of the plumbers and everything that go around him and all of that.
Yeah.
Certainly those aren't $60,000.
Well.
I haven't bought a van in years.
Yeah, they're not as far off as we might, would like to think, unfortunately. The one, the used.
I found a couple decent used ones, a, a 2010, and it had nice toolboxes in it, and sized it open. It was a Chevy three-quarter ton, that was $25,000 with 60,000 miles on it, but that's a lot quick anyway. And then there's a, there's another one I just looked at, 2014, with almost 100,000 miles on it, or 20,000. That doesn't have, doesn't have a hitch on the back to haul the mole trail and that kind of thing.
When do the trucks cycle off, that, from Jason in the fire department said it, was that even an option, or they?
It's department by department, you know.
I think Jason said five years.
Yeah.
Ask him.
Five years from now?
Yep.
So that, that's, that's not gonna work for us, right?
He's on a five-year truck cycle?
He's on a five-year truck cycle, but his truck will be there next year.
It looks very new, that truck, yeah.
I already tried to get it done.
And that's the other part of this, is, like we said, to have that hitch on it, because we, again, we're trying to like maximize, you have to go.
It could've been Jason with 25.
There's also the matter of security. Do you keep your tools in there? You have to be running back and forth to get something, and you've got space to carry and things done.
Yeah, that's true. Yep. Good luck.
So he left his jacket, so he must be coming back.
He's coming back, moving the other. We hanging out here all night.
Oh, yeah.
Is this where we do this?
I think we do this part, I'm, I'm with you.
I've got a question too.
Oh, sorry, yes.
If we wanna get down to the budget, just, just, uh, uh, two questions, really. On, you've moved stuff from that second paragraph down to the third paragraph, but you've got, for example, line 3575, you've got $500, this is West Rockport.
Yep.
And on 5175 for West Rockport, you've got $200, so which one is, was actually spent last year?
Well, we left what was budgeted last year, where it was budgeted last year. The only thing we moved was like going into the next budget, instead of it being a contractual expense, it's now a supply expense.
Okay, and so with the library?
Right, so whatever was budgeted in this current operating budget, we left it in whatever line it was in.
Okay. And the other thing, I, I, question I have, um, last, when was it? Page 230, the Harbor Masters Building. Here you've got for the Harbor Masters Building, $2, $2,500, which is for, uh, for painting and windows and so on, and you admit that that's not gonna cover everything, but it'll get us started. Back on page 230, when we were talking about the Harbor Masters.
Yep.
They wanted $44,000 for public restroom renovation.
Yep.
I'm not a guy, so I've never been in the men's room there, but if I went, if I was a guy from, and went in and saw a leaking urinal, I'd be pretty upset. I would like to see us put at least half that restroom money back in the budget, so they can get started. Especially since you've got only $2,500 for cleaning. And certainly the buildings and grounds guys might be able to do some of, maybe fix a toilet. The urinal, so it's not leaking. I mean, this is, this is the face of our town to all those sailors who are coming in, and.
I agree, I was thinking about that the other day, and I know that she talked about the washer and dryer.
Yeah.
And that we don't make the money off the washer and dryer. Would it make more sense to put in the budget buying a washer and dryer, and then keep that revenue and maybe fund the bathrooms? I mean, if they're paying us $300 for the season, you know they're making a lot more, right? So, might it make sense for us to buy a washer and dryer?
Well, maybe they're working for the summer, so we could get them a little work.
Yeah, so if we got, if we got a good capacity washer and dryer in there, and then kept the money ourselves, instead of giving it to the, um, you know, Waymess.
Yeah.
Maybe we could use that to fund fixing the, the toilets, because that is pretty bad.
I just bought a washer.
Me too.
Just under $1,000.
Yeah.
And that was, that was, and I think you buy them in sets.
Yeah, they're coin, yeah, they're coin.
Yeah.
They're more expensive.
They are more, they, they are more expensive, but it would be an investment, because we may bring some money off that versus, you know what I mean? Like the, I, because I agree, $2,500 isn't gonna, at least something's there, but it's not gonna touch it.
Right.
But if we can, maybe we invest that $2,500 in a new washer and dryer that are gonna make us some money that we can then put towards fixing the toilets. Because that is, I mean, that is like the face of our port, kind of gross.
Makes sense, yeah.
I think with the length of life expectancy of a commercial bathroom like that, and it hasn't been touched too much since it was initially built, so it definitely needs some major.
Yeah, I think that they needed it about 10 years ago, last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think $22,000 back on, in the Harbor Masters budget is gonna kill me, though.
It sounds clary, reading what that was.
Oh, I know what it was.
So how do we, I'm asking because I don't know, how do we do something like that? So I know we're talking about budget, and then we vote, but like, how do we do that? How do we make that potential change?
When you have your meeting, you would discuss it then?
Or the select board might add it at their meeting tomorrow.
At our meeting. Yeah, and then you have our, then you say what we have, and then you have your meeting, and you discuss it, and decide if there's anything else you wanted to, do a whole budget meeting.
Okay.
With just your, with, yeah, with just budget committee.
Okay, thank you. I'm like, what special meeting do I have?
No, no, with the budget committee.
This one?
You should always come to the select board's meetings too.
Yeah.
Just to hear the person with their thoughts on it.
Yeah, there's only so much. You know, I work full-time, I have some people I got too good, I'm here.
Just real quick, so everyone heard that.
But thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah, so tomorrow, the select board will set their first draft of their budget, and that will go to the full budget committee on Tuesday next week.
Okay.
And then you'll make your recommendations on their, on their budget.
Thank you.
So, basically after tonight, it's, it's, you know, the select board is the driver's seat.
But it does help to hear what budget people focus on in the place, different items, because then you can talk to them.
Okay, and then two same would be one of the shakes of our conversation. Okay, thank you, thanks.
Okay. Then you have your meeting, then like, oh, that does, and then that.
Okay, perfect.
And we play, and we play pickleball with it.
Thank you.
Not usually, but we'll have, it's possible. Yeah, so if you don't like things, that's when you, when you.
Gotcha. Alright, I got one, I got my signal, so next up, we'll talk about the town clerk's budget. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you. Anybody wants to talk to me, you can give me my phone number.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Came all the way over from Hope, guys. All that way.
Four minutes left.
The Cinderella budget, easy.
Right. So, town clerks, uh, town clerk budget. This is not one of the more exciting budgets. Sorry, Liz. No, it's all, it's good, it's good. So, we reduced the number of tax write-offs. Last year, we had put $14,000 in, not knowing that that would be Linda's last part of her budget, but we accomplished the number of write-offs, uh, the select board approved the number of write-offs right before the end of her tenure. There's still expected to be some that will crop up, and so there is a need for half that amount, but, uh, you know, Liz is really just getting her feet wet, having been on the job barely two months at this point. Two months and two days, so, or two months and two days, yeah. We have some increased computer supplies, uh, part of our need to do the, uh, part of doing the plates required us to buy a printer to print the titles, and title applications, I should say. And so there's an increase in computer supplies for that, some new voting booths.
Are the corresponding fees that we get for doing it?
No, just the gratitude. Yes, the gratitude of not having to drive across the town line on, it's sitting at the DMV.
That is nice, yeah, I have, yeah, no, no, not the new system, but I'm saying that is nice.
Oh, to not have to.
To not have to do it.
Yeah, we, we did this in Hope. Jim, you won the board then, we did it in Hope. We won the board.
I don't know, I remember Florence running.
She didn't like the idea of it, definitely, but, but it worked out.
It was going off, I think.
Yes, yes, you were, yeah. And it, I mean, it, it just changes your whole mindset of, this is like the first part of like 18 steps to get a plate. Here you come in, going, one, one stop shopping.
Very nice.
So anyway, uh, we have some money here for new voting booths. We're, obviously, we have this room, but I think we need to start looking at some alternative locations, potentially back across the road like we used to do, um, and, and, you know, during the election, we were pretty tight with the booths we had, so Liz has put aside for that. We've increased the interest on taxes, um, well, the interest, interest on taxes increased to 8% for uncollected taxes. It's four now, so we can bump that number up. And then excise tax, which is the one we talked about quite a bit last year. We've gone to a million, and we, through the conversations with the board, the budget committee, turned that back to 950. It looks like we're gonna be over that number for this present year, so I feel as though we have some, some good latitude to be able to save a million.
The number is in now, 538, is that from Jan, December 31? Where we got raised at? Oh, eight months? The other question is, don't we, don't we authorize at town meeting the percentage that we charge people?
Yes, yes, so there's, uh, on uncollected taxes, voters approve a percentage.
And you were just mentioning what was being changed from four to eight? Doesn't the state set it anyway?
Yes, state sets it, and you could go above that number.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, but you have to, there's a certain distance you can, you have to have between that and what you collect, what you keep for prepaid taxes as well. 4%, yeah, it gets real complicated, but the most important thing is just the states that are, state sets it, and you can choose to go above it.
Oh, I thought you couldn't, yeah.
But we don't typically go.
We don't.
We just usually use the big recommended.
It's good enough for state of Maine, it's good enough for Rockport.
We have plenty of people that get our minds that.
So what was the eight months?
We have through January, I'm meeting 154, which is just over $620,000.
Yeah, so you should do the.
Yeah. But, so, on the interest though, so we budgeted 35. We're at $8,700. How much are we still outstanding that people haven't paid? The difference, what do we have, another payment coming due? I don't know, mine's through the mortgage, so they paid all at once, so, I don't remember. Five weeks from tomorrow, today, five weeks from today. Right? April 15th or 18th or whatever, end of May.
Magic day.
Yeah, so, so are we, I'm just concerned that if we're saying we budgeted 35, we're only at $8,700, and we have one more payment, so to say the same number of people are late, then you're only at 17, 1800 for the, that's what I mean, 18,000, sorry, zeros don't mean much. 18M.
One half of what we budgeted.
Yeah, right, we would be at about one-half of what we budgeted. Do we have a lot of outstanding taxes that we haven't yet collected that we're, are earning interest right at the moment? That we're comfortable that we're gonna hit 35, that I would be comfortable saying we're gonna hit 45?
That we're comfortable that we're gonna hit thirty-five, that I would be comfortable saying we're gonna hit forty-five?
Comparatively speaking, to like twenty-twenty-one, which is when we were at eight percent last.
Yeah.
We have about the same outstanding now as we did that year.
Okay.
So reasonably, you could probably even increase the forty-five thousand, but it's hard to tell like where people will land on that, so.
Of course, I, I realize that, I was just.
You wanna make sure.
Yeah, forty-five wasn't too high, yeah.
It's a tough one, because you're nine months into whatever.
Right, which is what's kind of concerning me. So I mean, say we're even at like ten now, I mean, at best, we'd be around twenty or twenty-two by June, which is nowhere near thirty-five.
We have a surprising number of people here, uh, and I experienced this on the wastewater lien side, that actually prefer to pay our fees and interest.
Right.
Going through the lien process, because they're making more money outside than what they're.
I have stuff that's earning close to six percent just sitting there. So yeah, I would, I would eat the four percent, make the two, rather than letting you have the money. Yeah, but when you go to eight, that's a little trickier, which it's harder to convince people to, yeah, sit on your money when you're charging eight, and I'm still only able to earn six, cause now it's the other side of the coin, so. But, I mean, I see your point. I don't know, whatever, I'm just trying to be comfortable with forty-five. I mean, it's not a huge number one way or the other, but.
Right.
I don't know, I guess looking at numbers all day makes my brain skew different.
Yeah. We could, right?
Could we, you know what we had when we had sixty at, at that time, in twenty-one?
I don't remember, but when I looked at it, they were about the same.
Yeah, I mean, so if there's still outstanding debts that people are paying interest on.
Yeah.
I mean, last year, we were at four percent too, we collected just over thirty thousand.
Yeah.
There's still uncollected taxes from that year too, which are being added to this year, so.
Yeah.
So it's kind of hard to like estimate those, but when we collected the sixty thousand, our outstanding taxes were about the same at this point.
Do we have any data on increasing the interest rate and potential hardship and note payment that will cause for people? Do we have any data on that? Just wondering, like, it's a gamble, right? Like, it seems like it's a good idea on paper, cause we'll get more interest, but is it gonna cause, kill people in a position where they can't pay at all, and now we get nothing, you know, and then.
Can't believe we'll go to any max.
So we're at four?
Yeah.
Oh, the state's moving, I'm sorry, misunderstood that.
Yeah, I thought you couldn't go above it, I guess.
Okay, okay, you can't go below it.
Okay.
Yeah, and probably the differential, the, um, excise tax.
I wonder if people will be more likely to use payment plans than increase them out too.
Well, we've budgeted a million, and it looks like we're ahead of that.
You're usually.
Oh, you're here, yeah, oh, I thought you said.
Yeah, right, I know, we'll probably pick it up over here. Yeah, I realize that. Well, that's what they're, that's helping us. Yeah.
I have a question.
John?
Hi, oh, sorry, yep.
I just had a question, um, underlying thirty-eight sixty records preservation. I know Linda had a program of one book a year, and the question is, has the price gone up? She, uh, Liz wants four thousand, does that reflect the increased cost of preserving one book a year?
No.
Go ahead.
No, the cost hasn't increased, there's just, um, there's quite a few that even before she left, she had shown me that still need to be done, that are in rough shape, and that was.
I've seen them.
Yeah.
You wanna talk later, I can probably put you in touch with the people who digitized them.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would be another way of doing it, and it doesn't cost us anything.
Right. I have a question about that, the furniture and fixtures, that's gone up quite a bit, um, and it's not a large amount, right? Twenty-eight hundred, but it's a two-hundred-and-sixteen percent increase. Is there something in particular that's driving that? That's not the voting booth, right? I think that's a separate line item. I thought that was a separate line item. Seven-three thirty-five is furniture and fixtures, is that the voting booth?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
So when you look at, uh, thirty-day notices to lien lien numbers, tax year twenty would be fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, so we were at two-hundred-and-nineteen, two-hundred-and-forty lien notices, which is really not out of place with where the year's interest rate was lower. Uh, there were a hundred and eight, uh, actual liens placed, again, not really out of place with where it was before. And then the foreclosure warnings were twelve. I mean, when you look at historically, they were actually significantly less the year they were charging more interest. So I don't know as though a higher interest rate necessarily correlates with people not.
Not being able to pay it, yep.
Maybe it makes them pay quicker.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, right. What's that?
Thank you.
Anything else on clerks? Okay, thanks, Liz. Thank you.
Thank you.
We wanted to make the first time in this.
Yeah, right. And then there was one. Orion!
A little weird.
So, um, so the big, big changes in here, um, again, this is more, you know, so this is sort of a comment on my budget as opposed to Orion's budget, and, um, we can sort of talk about what that is, but, um, Orion put my inside for, um, part-time, um, a part-time position for alternate code officer, um, that's something that I removed from my budget. Um, it's not that, I don't think we need more enforcement, I think we need more enforcement in fact. But I couldn't justify the added expense in a year when we're trying to do so many things.
Give me the breakdown of the two-hundred-and-thirty, you know I don't like that, but it's commingling, everybody's into one.
Yep.
You know, was that one person getting two-hundred-and-thirty? I'm batting for it.
Thanks.
And then four, or is it four, or is it four people getting, you know, sixty thousand?
I'll let John answer that.
I think, uh, I just want to, the salaries.
Right, that's where I was going.
Yeah, but you have to, you have to revert that to the salaries, so you'd be, yeah, I agree. Well, you can't understand what's really going on.
I, I wouldn't say it's a chameleon.
Well, no, but I mean.
I, I think that's, that's a little strong.
It is, it is harder to understand though without having it mapped out.
Correct.
We had the separate meeting, which was great, but it's gotta be mapped out to really understand it.
The problem is, is that, and this is, this is gonna be a, a manager argument versus what a board or a committee or a select board would say, but effectively, you're, and as long as we can map out what that, what that budget includes, certainly glad to do that. The challenge is, is that in terms of the salaries and the makeup of those budgets, those are really, add, those are jobs tasked to need to fill out. So when we talk about what are we trying to get out of this department, that's really, you're asking me to make sure that those, those needs are filled. So I can certainly say, you know, what goes into that number, I'm sort of glad to do that. But it, what ends up happening a lot, in, in having done this for so many years, it can become a situation where the budget committee or the select board, um, comes into situations where they're having more conversations about individual positions or salaries than perhaps this room is really equipped to handle. You go into who's, oh, this is a good employee, this is a bad employee, and I don't really want, I don't think that's, that's really the place for this type of conversation. This is really, how much is too much? Are we gaining good value for what we're doing? What are we trying to accomplish at, in the larger sense? If we get too deep into the weeds of, of individual positions, this whole process can sort of go, that's why we had a six-hour meeting.
Let me simplify it now, how many positions does that two-hundred-and-thirty thousand cover?
So it's three people.
And currently, this, in the year we're in now, it's, I'm in.
Three people. Nothing's changed.
And there.
So nothing's changed, that's, that's my point, like.
Well, no, I guess, so that's, that's, uh, Orion.
Two-thirty, so it's a planner.
Orion and, and.
Code officer, assistant.
Scott, okay.
Same as last year, so last year, we made a change, where we took, we took that position, it had been shared between planning community development and the police department, eighty-twenty, and we made that a full-time assistant position. We created, we moved from a contract position for our planner, and we made that a full-time position. That was last year's budget, the one we're in right now.
And Scott wasn't full-time either.
Scott wasn't full-time, he was eighty percent and went to, went to a hundred percent.
Two hours and forty.
So in process, so in doing all that, though, in terms of budget year over year, the changes we have year over year are only impacted by the salary survey.
Yeah.
So what we're talking about, what, what has changed here, it's, we've gone to market and said, what do these positions worth, what are we talking about? And that's the impact you're seeing from this year to the.
But some of, some of them do include new staff added as well, right?
In some departments, yeah, that's why we're talking about.
By the way, I agree with you, it's not, it's not the time to get into who deserves more, who deserves less, nor is that necessarily our position to decide.
Yeah.
But I do think we need to have enough transparency in those numbers to be able to make an informed and educated decision and vote appropriately, and I think so does the town. So I think it needs to be fair and transparent to understand, this is the number of FTE, this is what the number was last year, maybe here's the average pay or whatever for a person, but I, I think how it is now is very difficult for me to understand if that's the number I agree with or don't agree with, cause it's just one sum.
Yeah.
And then I, I do think if, you know, the salary study was very good information, but I also think, you know, there are some gaps, like we should be looking at maybe total compensation package for, in comparison. We should be looking at percent of budget if we're looking at like towns, et cetera. So I think there are some other things that should be included in their consideration, not just, oh, that's absolutely what we should do. And right now, it's, it's hard to make those decisions with just that top-line number.
Yep. Well, yeah, I, I mean, I think that that's, I think those are fair, I think certainly we could have more information. I think, you know, as we were going through this, my difficulty with the wages, and how do you go from one to the other, I think, like you said, you could talk about staffing levels underneath that to say, okay, this is how many positions, this is how you, how you staff that department, and there's a way to do that differently, maybe a separate page. There is a distinction, and there should be a distinction, next year to say, okay, you know, the same, it's the same amount, but this is eight employees and this is two. The ability to look at that and, and on its face, you can't really, you can't really do that.
Right.
So I think, I think that's fair, as we go back to the lab next year, if we come up with a new, a new version of this, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's good feedback.
It's just helpful as well, like then when we look at, like, Abby's looking for staff and we said no to Abby, so how do we, you know, how do we get comfortable with those, those decisions?
Right.
The right decision for the town, cause that's what we're trying to do, is make the right decision for the town.
Right, no, it's, and I think in, Abby's in particular, that's a, that's a very, it's a difficult budget to staff because it's not a consistent number throughout the year. It's, you know, for some positions, it's twenty-four weeks, for some, it's eight, for some, it's twelve.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to sort of, um, you know, under the old system, we have a line for every different department or each, each, each position. Even that would have perhaps been a little bit of a misnomer because of how it looked and how, uh, its impact might have, might have impacted the budget, so, but, either way, the point is, I, I think you're right, I think there's a different way to show a bit more of a characteristic of what those wages entail.
Yeah, just think more transparency, and then see if we can get more creative, like, can we share a person between the town and Abby? Right, can we do some things like that?
Yep.
And maybe look at if, cause I have actually heard from people in the community that they try to get ahold of somebody in the harbor, at Harbor Master Building, and they never can, cause she's out running around all the time, so that, you know, that's potentially lost revenue if they're trying to book dockage or whatever the case would be, and it also just doesn't look good for the town. So I don't know, is there a way to share some of the staff?
Who calls that one minimum?
Yeah, something, you know, yeah, 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 but if she's, you know, that's probably a whole other topic, but if she's responsible for, you know, the grounds as well as, I mean, that's a lot for her to be doing.
What, and I think it was really helpful, I mean, this is way off topic, so, but I think, I think it was, no, I think it's good though, up to your point, is I think it was a good conversation there last, or last week, last Wednesday.
Yeah.
Because it does, there is the extremes of this, and as Mark was saying, this is a discussion that we've had for eons. What, when Jim was on the board, I was on the board, and it's a very difficult thing, because we're really good, towns are really good at doing the same thing all the time, they're not very good about adjusting on the fly to, oh, it's really busy, how do we staff for that? And then how do we staff when it's not there? You know, in private business, it's, it's much easier to ride those peaks and valleys. For municipality, we, everything we do is slow, everything we do is methodically, everything we do is with purpose and, and policy and process, which is great, you know, no private business would do that, what we're doing here, and yet, I think that, yeah, there's good things that come out of those conversations, but my, my point, my larger point is, we don't do a very good job of talking about the peaks and, and, and we will, sometimes we only focus on one or the other. And so, you know, that conversation tonight was really important to really talk about, there are two ends of that spectrum that require, both require attention, you know?
Yeah.
So, sorry, I don't mean to distract.
That's okay, can I bring, bring it back to the code for a minute? So you had in here a request for additional staffing, right? Do we make, my ignorance, but do we make money of having additional code officers? Because you're issuing permits or anything now?
I mean, through permits, yeah, but from enforcement, no, it's mainly a, you know, non-compliance.
Okay. So it's more of a checks and balances, okay?
And, you know, to be, to add to that, though.
I mean, the budget is fifteen hundred in permanent time.
Right. But on the, on the whole of.
Oh, really?
It's more about the integrity of, of our ordinances and the integrity of what we're trying to, how we're trying to manage land use that's out of Rockport, you know? It's about the ability for us to say that, you know, every construct, piece of construction that's, that's going up or, or being put together is under the watchful eye, and everyone's following the same rules, no matter who they are, where they are, what they are, and stop. ZB A chair checking in.
Going up a dream lane.
But, you know, as a busy, as a town that's very busy, a lot going on, your neighborhood, every neighborhood, has seen a lot of construction over the last few years. We're full-time, a full-time basis, our code officer is, is processing those permits and doing his inspections, but there is no fail-safe, there is no plan B. Um, if he was ill or, or absent or sick, we don't really have another option right at present.
Okay, so this might be a silly question, but again, couldn't we get one person that shares, that helps in the office, that helps with code, that helps in the harbor, I, I mean.
The person that was in that position before and was planning to go out and look at things and help Scott. Right, and currently, that's not the case in here, so yeah, we probably could.
So, so I'm, I'm just gonna speak to a little bit on it, we, we tried it, and I think it was just, that position was so spread, so thin that it wasn't effective, and we're still cleaning up the mess from that. So if we're going to do it, uh, I would prefer to start with someone part-time, then so we have this, and then maybe we find where they can also fit into the town.
Maybe not the right person.
We do, we, I, I would also say over the last fifteen, twenty years, we've done a really bad job of sharing. Not really good at sharing. We, we have a lot of departments.
Everybody wants their own truck, everybody wants their own staff, everybody wants their own equipment.
I want my own blocks.
Yeah, right, come on. It's all one town.
That's right.
We'll be sharing.
It's all the same, the seals the same, or the size of the truck, no matter what you're doing, should be. Um, but it's, it's difficult sometimes for those, the shifting of gears. Times it works, and then when it doesn't work, what do you do? And I think in that case, it worked for a period of time, but it seems to fall apart, and that's what we've done a lot of. We've done these sharing, two different departments, share this person, share this person, to share this person, in effort to try to save. And it can work for a period of time, or it can not work at all, sometimes it's personalities, sometimes it's, you know, departments going in different directions, who knows what it could be. We'll talk a little bit about finance in a bit, but in that instance, just in the, the base of, and you mentioned it, Diana, the. the base of, and you mentioned it, Diana, the position of assistant is really the person who answers the phone when you call, right? And if you don't have that person available because they're out doing inspection, it's already sort of off-putting contractors who are wondering, well, who's there to help me, how do I, how do I access what I need, how do I get a hold of Scott, how, it becomes this sort of fraud, this thing that can kind of build up. And so that was why I wanted to separate those two issues. But Orion, to Orion's credit, his department, and he's saying, well, I still have this need, this delete, that, that fail-safe, that second level. Um, but again, that's a, I'm, I'm arguing against myself, we'll hope it here, but I just didn't think we could fit it in this year. I think there may be some other ways you could do that, and.
Well, the benefit of two part-time positions is we don't have benefits.
Right, benefit is you don't have benefits, yes, that's right.
You'd rather have two dedicated part-time people than.
Yeah. But I'm all for sharing where it makes sense, too. I mean, I'm, I'm not against that, and we need more cross-training in, in, at large in the town office, um, but.
Is, is cross-training effective on something that could be potentially very, um, training-intensive like the code officers?
Yeah, it's difficult here, there's few, there's few jobs that would.
Your candidates.
Yeah, it's a small pool. I mean, you have to, so to be a licensed code enforcement officer in the state of Maine, um, you, anyone can be hired, any of you, any of you could be hired. Even, we want you, you could be a code officer, you have a year, and then after that, within that year's time, you have to, you have to pass, uh, a series of five tests with the state of Maine, um, that's, you know, legal issues, um, shoreline zoning, building issues, and then, um, sure, excuse me, uh, internal plumbing and subsurface wastewater. You could pass those five tests. And then additionally, in Rockport, because we've accepted the building code, there are additional levels of, of review and inspection that you need to be proficient in. So it's, it's not, unfortunately, it's not as easy as plug-and-play. Um, I think we have a lot of staff who will be willing to sort of tack on the first level of that, but it's the second level, the, you know, putting, you know, structural engineering and the energy code, all these different avenues are a little bit more than your average code officer is, is handling in the state of Maine, that's where it becomes very specialized.
Is the one-hour our requirement or state requirement? I mean, one year to get to the same time.
State requirement.
State requirement.
Yep, and then there's a certain number of credit hours you need to maintain your certification.
Now, looking forward to, maybe we talked about someone's on that.
Where all that?
Potential, yeah. Whatever, let's head her home. Brothers to the north there, don't, like they do with their fire department, I believe, some of their code inspections and stuff, their new fire personnel are following up on.
Yep.
And if we're looking at new personnel in that position, are we not also, can we, I mean, is there potential there? I, I don't know how.
The last time I mentioned the idea that I got in trouble, so I need to be careful when I answer this question to you, Clay. I think, I think we should look at every option, and I think Orion will be open to every option. Um, but I think, you know.
I mean, I feel like that might also soften a little bit of a blow, hiring a full, even a part-time person here who might not necessarily be committed.
I mean, that's where I was going, because somewhere out in that, in between office, there's one full-time person gonna be hired.
Yep.
Right, so, and I was trying to find out by asking whether it was solely for you or solely for you or, because you got two people doing four different jobs currently.
That's, that's a good way of putting it.
Yeah, no, two people, they're, they're working part-time here, part-time there for, for the.
Everywhere.
People that are there.
Yeah.
Or in that case, not all there.
Yeah. But, I mean, to Clay's point, I think that there's some ways, some saving. The issue that I've heard in Camden, and I, and I'm not, I'm not saying specifically who, but part of the concern I've heard is that they're doing more code enforcement than they are firefighting. That, we don't wanna lose a firefighter, EMT, because they're, you know, spending more time on job sites than they are on.
Exactly, they're not showing up.
Agreed, but that, there's.
I think it just means that the, the balance of work is, was put heavily on that department of, of inspection, um, but that's secondhand, so I don't.
I mean, we're currently getting by with zero firefighters.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
Take a step up and bring on some full-time firefighters that are part-time code.
Yeah, I think it's doable.
I don't think it'd be a terrible idea either.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's a good way for us to get from, from A to B, you know? Yeah, but like I said, I, that conversation didn't go well for me last time, so I wanna, yeah, well, but we gotta do what we gotta do.
Not every conversation's fun.
No, they're not, I wish they were, no.
All right, so I just have a couple of questions on the, on the, um, uh, budget. I'm sure they're easily answered, but, um, advertising for, so thirty-eight oh five, that's a, yeah, fifty-four hundred, so it's a pretty big increase, and I'm just, again, I'm going back to like, we need to work in urinal, and we're, you know, we've got fifty-four hundred on that. Is there, is there something in particular we're advertising for?
Yeah, um, let's see, so, um, with the community development hat that I wear.
Well, it's twenty-four hundred.
Well, it's twenty-four hundred, the, what I propose is.
He'd be fifty-four hundred.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I proposed fifty-four hundred because of various events that we're wanting to put on, and if we're going to market those, it's gonna have to cost something. And the idea behind this was to start a, start a fund so that we could get sponsorship and everything else at, for the first event, to then build up and be a reserve for the future events, so it wouldn't be like a, I guess, a year-over-year steady hit in the budget, to something now, so the events that we're currently planning, we got some money to advertise.
What, yeah, what are the event?
Yeah, one that's coming, can we talk about it?
Yeah, go for it.
For the Rockport Donut Festival, we're putting something together, yeah.
That's cool.
It's, uh, to serve as a summer kickoff festival on June second and third, it's on our website right now. We're trying to secure some sponsorship right now, we've got a few people that are interested in it.
Where are we doing that, the harbor?
Yep, um, I'm getting the.
Might wanna have the toilets fixed if I'm gonna do it in the harbor, but, you know.
I'm getting a things squared away at M U T, so we can close the bridge down, uh, so that we can have a, um, dinner on the bridge.
Oh, yeah, I did hear about that, that's really cool.
A few things squared away to the, uh, K one.
That's great, will we make money off that, too?
Yeah.
Okay, everything does its worst possible, whatever we're projecting, again.
And our hope is to make the event free to the public, so it's, uh.
We're not even gonna sell tickets? Wow.
We want it to be a community event.
That's fantastic.
Went to dinner.
I mean, the dinner, we'll sell tickets for the dinner on the bridge.
Okay, all right, good.
But like, the event itself, the entertainment we'll have in the harbor, uh, event that we'll have, will all be free.
The last one was fantastic, that's, that's a great idea.
We can rush the bridge.
But a business.
Just quote the newspapers, they go, it doesn't go the same way as the old, but it's just like.
Right, that's right. Don't eat too much, it's like fair.
Yeah.
Just hors d'oeuvres, that's all we care, we can handle.
Let's go.
Thank you.
I think we're sitting on the same main street.
That makes sense, thank you.
On the revenue side, we talk about civil engineering and personal. What is that?
Um, the revenue side, which, which number?
Uh, two, three, maybe like eighty-two, thirteen. Seven, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
That's really just to offset any expense that we have. So if we, if we have to pay for civil engineering for the planning board or ZBA or something, that applicant or whoever is bringing that.
So it's not really the avenue towards.
No, it's just an offsetting expense.
Right, so there's an expense.
It's an expense we already show on the website.
What, what am I, other side of the?
It's the miscellaneous board expenses with thirty-nine-five, got it.
Thank you.
What were the capital items that we're taking out? The land reserve, I guess we don't necessarily need, but like furniture and fixtures and mapping, what was that?
Yeah, that was taken out.
What does that stuff actually include, though? There's like furniture and fixtures for.
Well, so, um, there was proposed to do some items, uh, like Scott's office, if you've been in there, it's, uh.
It's my new victim, sure.
It, it's not kind of, it's, it's a closet.
So there was some talk about potentially doing office remodel, so like, okay, well, if we're gonna do office remodel, we're looking at putting my budget to offset some of this somehow with the current positions that I have, and what those desks might look like, something.
Sure, yeah.
We're pushing that off, so.
Well, the main thing is we don't know how many employees we have, so we gotta, first we'll deal with that issue, and then we'll deal with where they're gonna sit. I mean, it's somewhat the same situation as like the, the grounds a year ago, we don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves.
Yeah.
Borrow of our skis.
Yeah.
You know?
John, does the mapping here overlap what, um, accessory, what Carrie invited?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna talk about the mapping, because I know that was.
Well, let's see, seventy-four, ten, um, so with, with our comprehensive plan, we have enough currently in, in our reserve, double-check double-check, when I put this together, I was concerned with the printing aspects of everything, and so getting those maps printed, I put it into the budget, so we would have money for it, but yeah, so we don't need to worry about that.
Okay, but it doesn't overlap the, the type of mapping that Carrie?
None with this one.
No.
Oh, I'm working to try to make it a little bit cleaner, which department, part of this, Ryan has a lot of experience on the mapping side of it with, with GIS programming, um, Carrie also has some, so there's, there's sort of a chicken or egg, who do you go with? Who's the, you know, but not, but then not spend your money twice, so.
Right, yeah, so I, I also know Mike has a ton of maps down at his office, and Mike, there is some sort of a consolidation, a central location for all the maps everybody needs.
From your lips to God's ear, I hope that, I, I mean, that would be where we need to end now, is to consolidate those efforts. Uh, GovPilot, the software program that, that Orion sort of championed and put into a work, can do a lot of that work, uh, not all of it, uh, but it could do a lot of it in terms of integration with our permit system and, and, and also eventually an outward, um, you know, sort of community-focused side of how people can access maps, like, but, uh, we're still working to clear up the data on that, so.
So, or, uh, my administrative assistant, Annie, she's working on digitizing, I want a map, so that scanner that's mine, you have something.
Ooh, nice.
And, yeah, I think all of the mapping in this office has been scanned, and we're currently working on how to integrate that into GovPilot. Then on the public side, you would be able to like click on a parcel, and you could actually see, or the administrative side, and you could see what, what plan is in play currently, and then like for emergency purposes, like if there's a fire, Jason needs quick access to, he can quickly access what he needs to, but that, that's kind of a work.
Well, several years ago, I had, I was looking for a map for something, I forget what, and went down, and, uh, Mike has piles of them down there, and he didn't even know what he had, and I don't think we ever found what he had.
At this point, Annie, pretty much from the moment Annie started in December until now, she'd been scanning plans, so for about three months straight, she's been feeding things to that machine, it hasn't started smoking yet, but, but it, I thought it was going to at some point, but, but the fact that we've got all these plans on, you know, on electronic format is, is a huge benefit to us. Uh, the next effort that she'll be taking on, uh, will be to go through all the different permits, the paper permits that we've had. We're gonna take a pause on that until next winter, uh, but, but the fact we have these plans, I mean, that's, that's invaluable, um, that will be lost, so.
Nice.
Very exciting.
Weren't we talking about mapping with assessor, too?
That was for the ortho images, so that's like when they fly overhead and take the images of a property, so that's, that's different than what this is.
Um, I was gonna say, it could, it wouldn't be nice to be able to combine them to one project, but.
Yeah.
If they're not really, if they're not the same, then I guess it doesn't help.
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, that was my only question, but it'd be nice that they were, we're gonna do it, just do it.
Yeah.
Instead of piecemeal, and a little here, a little there, but.
I'd like to find out next year, next year's budget to do, but that's a year from now, so hopefully we can get there. Unless you, you know, work that, you know. Anything else on planning? Send Orion back to Waldboro? Just for the night, just for the night?
Yeah, I'll come back tomorrow. Give it a moment. Got any, any other questions?
I just think we could hire a full-time assessor, part-time code officer.
We are, okay, well, we have a full-time code officer, who we have more than we need for a full-time, we have more work than we, than we have for a full-time code officer, so I don't think we can go there.
So we hire a full-time assessor that does like backup assistant to start or whatever.
Okay, well.
Sharing resources.
Uh.
Within the town and sharing less outside of the town.
Yep.
Yeah.
Let's see, so.
At least assessing and code enforcement kind to go in.
There's overlap, yeah.
Better than firefighting and code.
Um, there's definitely overlap there.
I'm not denying that, but.
Yeah, I, I, I think, so you definitely have a full-time code officer, and then the question is, does, does what you get out of your assessor provide enough assistance to the code office, right?
I mean, we only have a part-time assessor right now, right?
Right, well, true.
Well, okay.
I mean, we're paying Camden's woman help.
Right.
That's me being a snarker.
So I'm thinking we, let Camden have their own full-time in case they need it.
Yeah.
And we have our own full-time, plus the part-time, plus part-time code.
It would cost us more than we have in this budget to do that.
But you'd have somebody in the building forty hours a week.
But I don't know, you need a full-time assessor. That's, that's where I'm sort of stuck is, I'm not sure we need another, another department head in that department who's here five days a week, and we're paying eighty-five.
But they're gonna be filling thirty thousand dollars worth of labor in the code enforcement office also.
Wait, say it again, Clay.
This, the thirty thousand dollars that you put in for the planning.
He took it out.
I took it out, by the way.
Well, agreed, but I'm saying, let's put it back in, so that Scott can have some assistance.
Yeah.
And we can justify, better justify a full-time assessor.
Well.
I find it hard to think that our planning office and code enforcement is gonna grow, continues to grow, and our assessing won't.
I, I think, I hate to say it, I think your planning, community development department will go faster than your assessing department will, but I think that the cost that you would, to bring on a full-time assessor, again, you're gonna talk eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars to hire that full-timer, plus benefits, that's a, that's a hundred, one hundred and forty.
That's only about, that's only about, I mean, considering we're already paying sixty-two or whatever it is to Camden, so you're only talking about another twenty-five or thirty thousand to add on to that, to get yourself a full-time person.
And won't they be busy if they're reassessing the whole town?
They wouldn't be doing it, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have an assessor handle that job. You'd have somebody outside do that.
But I'm saying, during that process, wouldn't they be busy?
Very, yes.
Yeah.
And they put their armor on.
That's true.
You, you did call, right? Because if we're paying sixty-two now for services.
Yeah.
And we'd have to pay, say it's ninety-two, so it's thirty thousand additional to get a full-time person.
Versus a part-time person.
Versus a part-time person that we have access to or their assistant.
They have to both the benefits by.
You would have to ask the benefits.
But then I was sort of getting off on the, we do another department.
But this just kind of kind of gets back to like some of the, some of the conversation has been around being a little bit more creative, right? And thinking, are there other ways to do it?
Yeah. But my argument is, we've been creative for the last fifteen years and failed. That's the problem.
We have different leadership now.
We do, we do.
Right?
But I've seen, I I have seen, thank you. But I think that part of the challenge of having those, having, well, I don't wanna get into the shared position thing, cause it would go, we're gonna get there anyway, but it's, whether whether you're sharing towns or you're sharing departments, sharing missions is never working well. People are being pulled in two different directions. They're not, they're not seeking out solutions of that that one goal or one department. And, you know, the individual we have in the position right now probably, you know, is a workhorse. There's somebody who who grinds out work. And frankly, it never takes time off. That's that's another problem. And the problem, the challenge is, is that if you put, if you were to replace that person, you're gonna get less productivity. Each department will be, will be lesser for that. So we're getting, you know, sixty hours out of a forty-hour employee because of their productivity. The challenge is, is that we need forty hours for each department. And that that math doesn't allow, while there's creativity, you can get out of being smart and being able to.
Work smarter, not harder.
Work smarter, not harder, you know? I think we've, I think we've shown progressively over the last decade, decade and a half, it doesn't work there, for whatever reason. And on top of that, the jobs and the what we're asking of the town are getting denser and deeper and further and harder along we go into this. This is, these jobs and these backups often aren't heard by the by the general public. But when the front line is is stretched, they need that backbone that they can stand on. And that's the challenges we've had, is that our backbone is beginning to shift. That's, no one wants a bad back. Jim knows all about having a bad back. He's been fighting through that the last year. Having a bad back is debilitating, it hurts everything. And so that's that's sort of why I'm trying to break those things out. But go back to Clay's point. I think that my argument going into this was that the availability of someone in that position of assessing and be able to communicate with the public and be able to do eighty percent of the of the position of of the department is really what the town of Rockport needs most of all right now. Doesn't need someone who is a highly paid department head for forty hours a week. I don't think, I think that what the town of Rockport needs right now is someone who's a little bit more in the work and less about the public side and less about the the ratios and the higher level sort of work that assessors do, that you pay eighty-five, a hundred thousand for. That's that's my opinion, cause I think you can get a little bit, you can get enough of that in half of the week to be able to feel like Rockport's covered and its residents are getting the feedback they need from the assessing department. That's a cheaper way to go than to have a full-time assessor and a part-time assistant. But, you know, you're the budget committee, you're the board, if you wanna spend more, I I I won't, you know, won't argue with you, you know? I just don't think it's the most efficient way to go. That's my, that's my take. But speaking of planning.
Yeah.
Is there anything else here? Another thing I would add is that we did increase the permit fees last spring. There was some new permit fee work that that Orion had done. And that dramatically increased where we were even from last year. So we had talked in the budget last year, for those who were here last year, we had increased those fees and then once Orion went through and the board considered those increased fees, they made those changes, so.
Also to that, with GovPilot, it automatically calculates the fees. So you type in the information, it automatically catches it. So it's a computer generating it, so the room for error is not as high. So if Scott's turning stuff out, you didn't have to worry about missing twenty bucks that shouldn't have been calculated. So with all of this, we're actually seeing an uptick in permit fees. Kind of nice.
Efficiency works sometimes, yeah.
I had a question on health insurance, just cause this is the first place I noticed that the expect health insurance is showing the decrease if the town did not see a larger increase in the health insurance cost. So that was ten point forty.
This, this year, we only saw an increase of five, five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, four and a half or five percent, where last year it was seven, the year before that it was ten. So we actually saw a lower increase in our health insurance premium overall.
Okay.
That one department, yeah.
And then as you, as you have employee turnover too. Right, like if you have an employee that was in the position before only doing single and then you hire an employee and they take family, it's gonna change it or vice versa.
And we've seen that a lot, that the new employees take the family.
Cause we have great.
We have family, yeah. That's, yeah.
And we're hiring people with families. A lot of the people that had single coverage was just done.
Right. Administration. Thank you, Ryan.
See y'all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
From now on, you're only hiring single.
Exactly.
I tried to get you to walk up with a beer.
It's furniture.
Yeah.
Not bad. So the only thing really noteworthy here is we increased the wastewater reimbursement to ten percent. That's just really a reflection of the amount of time that I expect the select board at this base will be handling wastewater issues over the next twelve months. Seems only right to me that they, that accounts for that part of of the position.
So if you are a stipend, you're getting ten percent?
The reimbursement from the wastewater account, no, it's not, it's not a, on top of, unfortunately, yeah. Yeah, the stipends did going, were increased as part of the salary survey as well. So I know that wasn't what you were talking about, but in case of your questions about why do we do this increase, that's, that was also part of the salary survey.
What's the community outreach? Why is that no longer in the budget?
Well, the 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 Donut Festival is sort of taking apart that role.
Okay.
And again, it seems as though we have a way to do that with some corporate sponsorships or or business sponsorships.
Okay.
So rather than having the town float that bill.
So that's more events, it's not like, I know the assessor was talking about, which I really liked, by the way, doing like Coke and open coffee.
Yeah.
And speaking of wastewater, like that might be a great thing for the town to do. I mean, so many people have questions about it that can't come to an evening meeting or whatever the case may be to do some coffee chats where people could just sit down, whether it's at Seafolk or wherever, maybe they'd sponsor it.
Yeah.
Have a cup of coffee with you and ask questions. I think that would be a really great way to get some of the community outreach and some of these topics that are very hot for people.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, the wastewater treatment plant, that fall under this area of the budget that?
No, it it wouldn't, it actually wouldn't be in the budget, be part of the wastewater budget, but also if that were to occur, it would require a town vote and so that would, that sort of any, you know, sort of head on its own path. But what what we do is, there's a portion of, a number of these different budgets where there's reimbursement that the, there's revenues from the wastewater department, which is separate from this budget, that go to support parts of the town government which are operating or managing wastewater. So the time I spend on wastewater, Megan's time, select board time, planner time, those, those are up, there's revenues in each of those budgets and then each of those lines to to make sure that the wastewater users who are funding the wastewater, you know, department, they are also funding the part of the town government, which is not just separate, an equivalent amount to the amount of time that's being spent on those issues. So, for example, in the next year, we expect to be a lot of conversations about wastewater. A lot of our time spent in that in that arena. So the idea is that wastewater would fund a portion of my time and select board's time because of that.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, because today, quite by accident, so to speak, in the course of other discussions, the issue of the the proposed wastewater treatment plant, specifically the idea of putting it in Green Park.
Yeah.
Came up and two people were vehemently upset that there hasn't been more transparency out there as to what the town was thinking and why, and some pictures of what this plant might look like.
Yeah.
And that's where they end.
We haven't got to that point.
Right, but the sooner you start addressing it, the sooner you can stop any.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Solidification on.
But I think you've got a good point, though, before we get to that point, it's getting, again, transparency, getting the information out there, which is why I think coffee talks or something like that. I think the more you can talk about these things, the better positioned you're gonna be before we get to the point where we're publishing and doing all that stuff. I think we need to have conversations about it.
We have put up all our preliminary information on the website, which our newsletter, instead of actually including it in the newsletter, cause there's so much of it, we put a blurb in the newsletter that goes to all box holders. That they, how to get to our website, like the section of the website that the information's in. So hopefully, as people read those newsletters, they'll start going to that information. And I think that we're also working on meeting with committees, so that it's another group of people, different groups of people that we're meeting with, and then going to that.
And not to derail it too much, but again, I think there's two different conversations. There's the conversations of why are we doing this and why is the town in this position? And that's, that's its own sort of conversation point that maybe that's the first cup of coffee. And there's a second cup of coffee that you have to have, sometimes a little something in it, maybe that'll get there. But but you have those two, because the first conversation is really why. And and there's a long way you gotta go to have that conversation, because it is complicated and it doesn't make a lot of sense. And logic seems to escape the conversation entirely.
And I think that night that we had the workshop here, Ryan explained to Taylor that, you know, we were giving until June twenty-sixth and we weren't gonna wait till the last minute.
Right.
And this is just a very thirty thousand foot overview of what the possibilities are. And then we sort of find out how we get there, if that is ultimately what we do. If we can't get into some agreement with our neighbors.
Mediation, maybe we need to hire a mediator.
Oh, there's mediation involved. We're already litigation, so.
Not a mediator, negotiator, I mean, a professional negotiator.
Do you know a guy?
Maybe I'll find one.
Is that why this MMA, are you training mixed martial arts?
Martial arts.
You know. That makes a whole lot more sense than anything else I'm doing right now. Mixed martial arts, get it in the cage, let's go. I think so. I think I could tell you, over the heavyweight division, she's in the flyweight, I think. Yeah.
So what else do we have relative to the administration budget?
Thanks for bringing this back.
No.
Let's get that on screen. We're all getting, we're all getting punchy now. What else do we have?
We're literally throwing punches. You wanna go to town manager?
Yeah.
Town manager it is. So. So we're fully funded on our crew benefit reserve. That was a big, cause you know, we were talking about the benefits and how to get there and are we, are we at a point where, you know, we can handle the fact that so many employees are leaving, we have a forty-five-year employee who's retiring next month, for example, can we afford that? Yes, we're fully funded in that, in that room. So we're, we we have the money to offer the benefits that we're offering and and we're gonna continue to do so. Legal fees outside the contract, which is lying thirty, forty-five. We had fourteen thousand set aside last year, I cut that entirely. I cut the travel expenses, I cut the tuition reimbursement. We trimmed the newsletter last year to four times, and thank you for doing that. It's, I think it's a better product, thank you, Eric. I think it's a better product. I think it allows our department heads to focus a little bit more on what they wanna say. It's not so often that they're, well, it's the same thing I just wrote last the other month.
Right, sure.
We did, right, right. So I I think that was a really good move and and then again, here we have the wastewater reimbursement. So that's, again, more higher, you know, percentage there.
So legal fees, are we still dealing with that issue downtown?
We are.
And that's included in the now thirty, forty?
That's in the planning.
That's in the planning budget.
This is just our contract.
Yeah, this is the Bernstein shirt contract. No increase.
And is the thirteen that's already been spent to date, so they actually bill us?
They bill us.
So we can track.
Yeah.
How we deliver it. Cause we pay them thirty-eight regardless.
We pay them thirty-eight, ain't it?
You know, it seems like we're outside of what we agreed to and get thrown extra.
Well, there are things that are outside, I mean, and there's a couple items that will be coming up that will be outside of the contract that the board will get to handle.
Is that with our neighbor?
Well, that is outside, actually, the litigation's outside. Yeah, but there are, you know, there are certain things that are, that will be coming up that will classify outside. But that also is, is the amount the same as last year and the same as the year before, which there aren't many things that are the same. I don't know, billion hours or, no, anyway. But yeah, trim back a lot of these sort of travel expenses, tuition, because again, let's, we gotta use it where we need it. We didn't need it in those areas. That's it for my budget. Any other questions? So exciting, but. All right, finance. So this is sort of what we've been talking about. I mean, again, assessing is sort of, is a similar conversation. Let me, I'll talk about that last. Professional fees. So one big change we've made over the last twelve months is to move toward toward outsourcing our payroll operations and to move towards a electronic time clock rather than, and written, you know, time cards every week. We've gone to electronic time clock. And let me just say this before there's any, you know, jokes. Some of our public works guys are some of our best, some, at at doing the little punch-in, punch-out on their phones. I think I mentioned this last year, when we talked about this, that one of our guys threw his flip phone and like drove over it or something. So credit to our public works employees for sort of taking the challenge and running with it. It's, it has cut down our time in terms of what it takes for us to manage payroll. Payroll was becoming a bear. And it's not simply because it's straight time, you know, every employee's forty hours, five, eight-hour days with a lunch they punch in and punch out. It's, we got comp time, we got differential pay, we have police department, we, you know, there's shift, I mean, detail pay, there's our public works that are doing, you know, their call-out pay. It's, it's a bear. And it became evident that the best way for us to move towards that was to get it out of our office, get the, you know, all of, all of the permits, not the permits, all of our our taxes, get that out of our office, have someone who's dedicated to that full-time handling those issues. And so we've done, we've moved that, and that's in here for professional fees. Our increased interest, we've gone from, what were we at the start of last year? One? Yeah, we're point seven five a year ago. We're now at three point seven five with our interest on our checking. Now we're with the first, so three point seven five. Okay, we'll talk to the wastewater reimbursement and then just to go back to the top, we've already sort of started this conversation, but a full-time deputy assistant to finance. And I say assistant, but I'm, I'm, this is not really an assistant in terms of get, making coffee and 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 Crellers. It's more about someone who's going to be doing the work in her absence or or self-directed to some degree. So. So I'm looking for someone who's, who can handle projects on their own, but under the direction of the finance director. Not a deputy finance director, not assistant finance director, uh, an AP clerk, uh, someone who has some level of their own responsibility. But for the reasons we talked about, and, you know, we talked a little bit about this earlier on when we were having these conversations here. Uh, some of these matters that we're handling are incredibly time-consuming. Whether you're talking about FEMA, whether we talk about the seemingly never-ending amount of insurance claims we see the filing. Those are gonna end up in the hands of the finance director. Right, there's, we had two more last week, this, you know. It's, it's, uh, you know, I think, I was thinking about this after one of our meetings last week. And I think, I think where, where kind of go with this is that, in terms of, you know, department heads and, and particularly finance director, you want them to be able to have enough time to be thinking a bit bigger than what the might, what the, the average daily churn puts before them. You want them to be able to be creative. You want them to be able to, you know, tackle projects that are more than just reconciling accounts and, and doing journal entries. You want them to be able to, to think big. Um, and it helped me in thinking big. And that's true for all department heads, but I think in finance in particular, because that's the taxpayer's money. And if we aren't able to remove, or move enough of those items onto someone working under the finance director, we're gonna lose that opportunity to not work. And I think, you know, with some of the issues we have coming up and wastewater being predominant among them, we need all hands on deck to solve these problems. And to be able to get someone who can take stress and the pressure and, and some of those more, run-of-the-mill tasks, I suppose, and, and to take that, take some of those things off when, you know, we have some, some real pressing matters coming up. And I, and I think finance is high among the, finance is, is the highest among the, of our departments. That really needs to tell our residents, we can afford this, we can do this. How we, how do we make sure that the, the TIF districts are going to realize the right rev, the right revenues to be able to support a user fee of X, Y, and Z? How do we, you know, those are the, those are the types of conversations we have to have. I'm not gonna be able to rely on Megan to provide that guidance and counsel, which she's gotta go back and she's gotta get back to the journal entries and get back to. The things that in, you know, probably when we started the finance department as a finance director, they were doing. I think this is an evolution of, of what the town needs at this time. And so this assistant helps to provide that room. There's no way we're gonna get the one point five million if we don't take something off of the back of the finance director and the one by five million from B my B. So it's a, to me, it's like a seesaw and somehow we have to get back and balance in the finance department. And that doesn't also, that also goes to say for human resources. We have human resources needs that are in my office, we have human resources needs are in the finance office. And we need to have a better answer in how we handle human resources, because right now it's, it's a bit more of a mishmash than it should be. Uh, but I, we're doing twenty percent of an assistant, or fifty percent of an assistant as it is now, on top of all the other projects. I don't feel like I can, I can shift more into that department, so.
And we've, we've been really project-heavy as a town. We've had, since I've been here, we've had two infrastructure bonds, a library bond, countless lease agreements. And all of these projects, and in the future, we have the potential for West Rockport Fire Station. We've had two wastewater bonds. We have the potential for another big wastewater project. These projects really need me to dedicate more time to them, uh, cause it's a lot of money. And we need to make sure, I mean, with the library project alone, I spend twenty hours a week just making sure that what we were paying was actually what we should be paying. And I mean, that's important. That's stuff that somebody at my level really needs to be focusing on and doing instead of someone being.
Instead of the Opera House or?
Well, see, this is where, this is where I was gonna go, because you, in your words, I don't like working sixty hours a week. And you've got one day a week that go with McCog, so, and I agree that your position is very important. And you should be in your office five days a week, even though we're getting paid apples to apples for what you're doing down there. But by not being here that fifth day, you either have to rely on your current assistant or do work beyond your, what would be your normal forty-hour a week. Plus, you're doing the Opera House booking. Plus, you're doing the, it, these little things don't amount to much, but when you're already busy anyway, as Jonathan had mentioned, some of those things that are, that you're doing should go somewhere else, cause that is an important position. And it's booking Opera House things and doing things down there, you know, that's not as important. I mean, that could be put off to somebody else. Well, and that's just my twenty percent view.
Yeah. I, I think part of our issue, though, and I'll, I'll take the Opera House for example, um, is that we've tried it all, it's kind of like we're splitting these positions up. We've tried it a whole bunch of different ways. We were gonna hire a full-time person and give them benefits and they were gonna, you know, do that. We've had, you know, Jean Friedman, who was back in the day, who would, you know, Sue Dates doing the rental agent. And I look at the condition of the building and for what, and we had a committee, we had a Harv, the Opera House Committee that was, none of those things have worked. And, and I feel like the first time it's now starting to work. Now, of course, the pipe breaking doesn't have anything to do with all that. And maybe it was, you know, maybe it's, it's sending us a sign, who knows what it might be, but it did. This is the first time we've had it managed properly. Now, I, whether the time and how that goes, I, we can, you know, we can.
Well, I'm just asking what benefit we get from McCog. I mean, do we get anything from them by virtue of supplying them with a finance person, other than apples for apples?
Well, right, so the, the money, the money offsets.
So we're not getting anything, so we're losing somebody for one day a week.
Why did you get, I didn't get to finish, Mark.
All right.
Well, no, I'm just. Hold on, I'm, I'm saving the best for last.
Oh, okay.
No, I, no, it's, look, we're a member community and, but prior to us, the city of Bath was doing the finances. If we didn't do it, the town of Bama Scott would do it. Some other town would have to pick it up. Some other community would have to pick up the, the banner and, and, you know, the question is, do you value trying to offset your bottom line? And, and, you know, a, as a community, does it make sense to offset what we're providing them? Do we have the capacity to do that? We could say no. We could say, no, we, we're a member community, but we don't want that task on to us.
We're hiring.
But it's two days, it's two days a month.
We're hiring.
It's not every week.
We're hiring a person for that position out here to help.
Well, but not to help McCog.
No, but to help us.
Help us, right.
But we're not here five days a week, so I'm saying if we're here five days a week and the position is solely focused on us.
Right.
And our finances, which you eloquently put were so important.
Yeah.
We should have that person forty hours a week here.
Well.
And McCog hired their own finance person.
Well, again, the, the contract's with the town of Rockport. It's not with us and Megan or however that works. It's with the town of Rockport. So we could structure that agreement however, and perhaps this position is the one that we send out. I, that's not, that's, that's still TBD. The, the point being, I don't think it, I think the point is we, we are not valuing this department and the needs of that department in the same way that we need to. And that we need to fund this, to this department with someone who is supporting the finance director on a full-time basis. And we could talk about how the McCog thing works.
Are we gonna get Megan back to forty hours a week instead of sixty? How are you gonna do that?
I don't think I'll ever, even if I just focus on my.
I'm just saying, I, I wanna hear it from you, because you said you're doing sixty hours a week, and I believe it. So how are you gonna get the finance position back to forty hours a week?
Change the logs?
Well, I'm just, you know, it's a question.
She's did, yeah.
We're gonna have down the road, so.
Is the expectation, is my expectation, she works sixty hours a week? No, it's not. Does she work because she wants to see the town of Rockport succeed and she knows the time that she devotes to it helps that happen? Yeah.
Oh, I believe it.
I think, do we, are we setting her, the finance department of the town of Rockport's success by giving her with a twen, you know, fifty percent on a full-time employee? No. So there's, there's two parts to that.
I think I'm hearing that we need more time in finance. And I also agree that maybe we'll not utilize Megan's highest and best use.
Right.
I do think that there is added benefit with me being at McCog, because we have approached opportunities that maybe, maybe wouldn't have known about otherwise. Such as, uh, the delegation earmark deadlines are coming up soon and that really wasn't on our radar until I saw it come through in something that MCAG was doing. It was like, hey, look, these earmark deadlines are coming up. We need to get on this. So I think, and things like that keep happening, so I think that there is a benefit having somebody in tune to what MCAG is doing and bringing that back here so that we can take advantage of that as well. And we're not competing with them, but we're recognizing something that's gonna help move Rockport forward.
We probably don't need our finance director taking reservations for the Opera House.
I don't take reservations to Opera House.
It's time spent during a week, whether it's consistently the same amount of time, it's time taken away from what you're best at.
Well, I, and I, I, I would agree with that. I think you're right. Anything that's not doing finance director duties directly would be that. I think that we use the tools what's available to us. If I had an unlimited budget and you all said, hey, go hire the best and brightest person to run the Opera House, and I could spend a hundred thousand dollars and I could get, I could find somebody, I could take it off her, her shoulders. We don't have that money. Our, what we're trying to do here is, is manage a, a hundred twenty-five, hundred thirty-year-old building with the time she has to, um, you know, delegate the, the, so much of that to other people to do. We'll rely on the fact that in her spare time, and there isn't much, but in her spare time, she's able to pull those things together. There's a lot of, there's a lot of department heads we do that tackle things that are upwards and above. Start with Jason. Jason's managing the rec field. Now, does he have time to do that? Maybe, maybe not. But has the rec field ever looked better? Even when it first opened, I would say, that's iffy. Or maybe when Tom was putting hundreds of thousands into that in his own time, Tom Farley, maybe then. But, you know, there's a part of this also where I think we have to hear what our department heads are saying to us, which is, I can do this, I can do this, I can't do this. And, and the differentiation between what a department head's value can provide and what an assistant, well, or clerk or however we wanna call that, what they can provide, those are different skill sets. We could, and we can get more out of both by, by accentuating their benefits. Um, and that's, that's really what we're trying to do here, you know, draw those two things separate.
So should we compensate Jason as we are for Megan to help run things over the Myers-Jones Field and make it even better? Is that what I hear, you know? I mean, he, what he's doing is very similar to what Megan's doing and making that building work. He's making that work, but he's not getting compensation.
I think it's a lot, I think it's a little, he's not here, but it's a lot easier to do that than what manage a hundred twenty-five-year-old building. But I hear what you're saying, and I, I don't think, I don't think that's a wrong way to look at that. I, I don't.
I'm not suggesting, you know.
How much, how much does that ring in, Mark?
You know, I'm just saying, you know, you, you got.
I don't think you're wrong. I, I, and honestly, I've, I've considered that idea.
Save it, save it for years.
The problem is, I'm really, what the problem is, is going back there, working sixty hours a week, how are we gonna deal with that?
I also think the board needs to have a clear decision on what they want the future of Opera House to be. Do you wanna sell it?
Sell.
Do you wanna keep operating it? Do you wanna put money into it and improve it? I, I think that the board needs to decide. It's no longer what can staff handle. I think the board needs to decide
Yeah.
what the future of the facility is.
Well, I do.
I think it needs to be more of a community discussion.
Yeah.
And I asked Jonathan the other day about having some numbers, if we could show how much, how much revenue come out of it as opposed to what's gone into it for the past ten years, you know?
I can tell you that is like way weighted.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's an imbalance.
Um, I, I'd just like to address two things. The town has always been supportive of and has benefited greatly from its, uh, department heads helping out common, you know, associations that, that, um, we had, Stacy was president of the GA, uh, portion of, is that in the name of A or was that?
Uh, Maywell, wealth director.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and all those things. And, and I, I think it absolutely helps the town. It, as you say, it brings you information that you wouldn't have otherwise. It, it, uh, you know, you may find, if, if we funded this full-time person, you may find that person because you're working down at McCag. You know, we've, we've done well on that in other, in other realms. So I personally would, would support the idea of, you know, so long as it doesn't go to crazy, um, of continuing that two-days-a-month, uh, down at McCag for that. The Opera House is, you know, Megan's not, you know, dealing with artists, she's not doing this, that, the other thing. Um, but when I have to have conversations about what's going wrong in the Opera House, rather than talking to somebody there who then has to turn around and say, this means money, now we gotta tie up, up Megan's funds, time anyway. It's really quite nice to go directly to the person who, who has the first strings and, and, and I only have to explain it once. I say, this is what broke, this is, you know, where the water came on, blah, blah, blah. This is our solution. And I only have to have that conversation once. So there is a, uh, right now in this period of, uh, of projects with the insurance people, um, you know, having Megan be in that position is actually quite handy. I mean, again, it is handy, but at what cost?
Right.
At what cost is the issue is that maybe she's more vital to stay within her forty hours and actually be rested and have a life outside of work, if she doesn't have to do so much.
The ba, the biggest time suck of recently is FEMA. I have spent over five hundred hours alone on the October twenty-one storm, just seeking reimbursement for FEMA. All the red tape, all the extra paperwork, all the extra red tape that we've had to go through and had four of our eleven projects certified, several more to go. That has been, if we didn't have that, then this might be a different conversation. I think the position would still be needed so that I could focus on the higher-level stuff. But honestly, until I can get this FEMA stuff fully behind us, it's just not gonna happen.
The money from that team will be ten times what the Opera House has ever paid to go.
And I, yeah, and I think the, the, the Opera House conversation is one that's going to happen. It's gonna happen, start the first conversation, really, the board's gonna talk about it on Monday night. So that will be the start of a conversation. But there's a lot that goes with that, that, I mean, coffees and all kinds of things that, that will go into it. We're not gonna make, obviously, that's not a discussion that we can have. And even if we're in the shuttering phase of that, it's gonna take someone to oversee that as well.
So that's, so it's not too late to Denise's point about having public input. When the warrant article is done for June, perhaps something could be put on there to, uh, get it, to do a little witness test.
Absolutely.
Of how people feel about that.
I mean.
I mean, not that I wanna get rid of it, but when you look at what we're getting out of it versus what we've been putting into it.
Yeah.
Sentimental values effectively shifted a little bit.
And I've heard many of this discussion talk about, is there a proof that once taken on as like friends of the Opera House?
Right.
And I, I really do think that's probably the most viable thing.
Not like the friends of Rockport?
We don't need, we don't need friends like that.
They're busy.
Maybe if we got them involved, they would.
Right, yeah.
I mean, at the end of all this conversation.
They turn into hotels, then they will.
At the end of all this, I think what we're all trying to do is find out how to give you more time.
Yeah.
And is this assistant gonna actually give you more time doing what you need to do?
Yeah.
And if it is, then. And if it is, then I think the assistant should be absorbing all the other work that is detracting from your time as finding instructors.
So that brings me back to my other question when I asked about Orion's position being shared with Scott. The current position that you have, um, is shared with
Assessing.
Assessing. So who's gonna be doing, is your person gonna be solely for you? And your person that's there now, or whomever that might be, um, is gonna be shared between?
It's just gonna be assessing. So it fixes your forty-hour-a-week assessing person to do that eighty percent that John's talking about.
So.
So even though you only have an assessor here two days a week, you have an assessing person here, by the way.
So right now, we're paying for twenty, fifty percent of the time of the person I'm here now is for assessing, roughly, it might not be fifty-fifty, but. So you wanna go from fifty-fifty to a hundred percent for an assessing person, does that mean we're still gonna be paying for Camden's assessors assistant if you're more than help, even though now we've got a full-time assistant?
I think that negotiation's still yet.
Well, I'm, I'm just, you know, just saying.
Oh, I know. And I, and I, and I hear it loud and clear.
Is that a guy that has a contract?
It's, it, the, the contract we currently have with Camden for assessing is one year. So it expires June thirty.
And it's a one all or nothing thing.
Yeah.
Can't have one without the other.
That's a question. The package.
Right. And even though we have some of the two people that are more than qualified to, or as qualified to help.
Yeah, I thi- I think, um, I think our position of argument's different this year than it was last year. That's all.
Well, there's a code in pretty.
There we go. No guarantees of success, but I think for a different spot. Um, yeah. Finance, anything else on finance? I know, you guys are waiting for the next one. I understand. This is where it gets exciting. Insurance! Right?
I think it's safe to say that this is a very, very conservative increase considering the number of claims I've submitted in the last six weeks.
Last two weeks. You guys already know.
You're sure, meaning you think it would be higher?
I don't see how it couldn't be higher.
Yeah.
It's, uh.
But we don't have.
I mean, we're looking at significant damage at the library, significant damage at the Opera House. Just had a fire truck take some pretty significant damage.
I wouldn't know, right?
What happened to the fire? Cause I read about the cruiser getting, getting, hitting.
Uh, yeah, we had a cruiser hit the deer.
Forgot that, sorry. Insurance companies.
Uh, we had a, uh, parts delivery guy drive into one of our garage doors at Public Works. So, you know, we're just.
So, what happened to the fire truck?
Um, it was slippery, slid into a tree, and then back and go, go then.
Yeah.
I was not there.
I wasn't looking at you because I knew you're, I just, yeah, immediate friend.
So our insurance rates are gonna go up because we, we're making claims.
I don't see how they can't. I mean, we've paid it, I swear, this is the most claims I have submitted ever in the last nine years. I don't think in total I've submitted as many claims as I've submitted in the last twelve weeks.
So with all those claims, do you really think it's only gonna go up four percent?
No, I have no idea how much it's gonna go.
Who cancels?
We, we will be lucky if they don't.
Who handles all the insurance?
Right. So we're in the pool.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We're in the deep end of the pool right now. Glove, glove.
And each of them are one-offs, and yet.
Oh, yeah.
And yet.
And yeah.
Yeah, but this is insurance, insurance.
There's no, like, it's not the same driver, it's different department. And one wasn't even our fault, which still go after the other guys' insurance for that, but it's still a claim on our.
Still, still impacting us.
It just has not, it's not gonna go like that.
Right.
It's what it is.
Right.
It is what it is.
General assistance.
Twenty-five hundred for deductibles, is that a right number?
I'm really hoping this is like a one-time thing and this doesn't.
I mean, that sounds very low, like for any one incident.
So any vehicle damage is a five hundred dollar deductible, building damage, it depends on what the damage is. Typically, if we have a claim, it's a police cruiser, so it's five hundred dollars. That's where our claims have historically been is, uh, deer, verse cruisers, usually what they are.
Yeah, and sometimes you can reduce your rates by taking a higher tag, tag deductible, yeah. And I'm just.
I think it's just a flat, like they blanket policy everybody. So you list what items you're insuring. They assess your billings for what the replacement value of that is. Uh, they take what the purchase price of the vehicle is, and that's what they insure us for. And it's, everybody has the same deductible and everything, so it's just whatever your portion of that is. And I would project that we'll see a higher increase because we've had claims to justify a higher increase. But I put five percent in just because who knows?
GA?
Yep.
Uh, so in this case, I moved the wages from GA to my department. So we have one GA administrator who also happens to be my executive assistant. And so there's always been some strangeness about that. It was how we sort of structured it, since that way it was, um, uh, a good representation, representation of the time, devoted to the position and just as a way to, like, make it a little bit simpler, we just lumped it in into one, one position. So though this is gone now, it's just added on to the town manager's wages because it's what we pay out to the executive assistant who fills that role of GA administrator. We used to have a deputy GA administrator, we no longer have that position.
Who takes care of it when the general assistance person is on vacation?
Not allowed to go on vacation.
No, that's why we had two.
Yeah, the problem was it wasn't really happening. It would end up, we weren't processing applications.
I think that was the pitch for Posdust they had too.
Yeah.
Well. So what, I'm just saying, what happens if they come in and, and they're not here?
So.
You do it?
I would have to.
Well, somebody has to, that's what I'm saying.
It's a dirty job, great. And, and, I mean, honestly, you have twenty-four hours of the time to give someone an application. So you have some time from there to make some decisions. The GA hotline is very helpful, it helps you walk it through. Um, so you can, you can, their biggest issue is they wanna make sure anytime someone has, has requested assistance, that it's processed within a day.
And we also have, uh, ways to offer emergency care. If John deemed it necessary, we have funds that we could use for that, that might call outside of the DA hotline. We also have understandings with the hotels that offer like housing assistance. Like if somebody came in here and needed a place to stay for the night, they know that we're gonna pay them. So it's not like they're gonna turn somebody away because they don't have a proof of that.
Whatever, whatever became of the Wyndham Fund?
I'm still looking into that.
It's all the case.
How much fund is in that fund?
Over half a million.
What's that for?
For, for medical assistance, but it's, it's very complicated. Uh, the last time I think they drew on it was two thousand. Last time anybody took any money out of it.
For people.
I can remember back thirty years ago when I was on the board before, they did take some money out of it, but.
It's very restrictive on what it can be used for.
And it's sort of like people who need assistance?
For just medical.
Just medical, okay.
I think the last time I remember, Bruce was the fire chief who bought a medical bed, a hospital bed for somebody on Bullshank Street, if I'm reading it correctly.
How do people know about that?
That's just it.
I mean, I think about, Sarah thinks.
If it's down to the hospital, but here's the problem, there's, uh, the EBIT fund. Uh, there's two or three different funds available through the hospital. So they go to those first. Okay, and if there's enough there, and apparently there is, they won't, they don't get anything else. So Diane and I, just as I make an appointment, get down and talk with them and see if they can at least, uh, you know, there must be some way they can use some of that money.
Or how about the homeless coalition?
The problem is that we can't, the Town of Rockport has to maintain control of the fund. So we can't just send
Right, sure.
like the homeless shelter check.
Right.
They would have to go through a process that the Town of Rockport establishes, and the Town of Rockport would issue that person a check.
But I'm just saying, like, if we worked with the homeless coalition, then they could come to us, right?
Right.
Well, there was some talk about potentially using it in some way with our new need for ambulance service or EMS, and you have to go to court to get it changed.
Right.
But the thing we do know is it's not being used in that certain way.
And I think, no, we, to be correctly, nine, uh, twenty nineteen was the last, the spite pool, they looked at that fund and updated it.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, yeah, it's in there, but, but anyway, we're working on it.
The other thing is we, we were even thinking of this fire reaching, as trying to use the interest off that that paid for GA. And then, cause the state reimburses for GA, so you could always be putting
It's a good idea.
the money back into it, but we don't know, cause I think it's restricted only for medical.
It is.
It is, not even using the interest.
Yeah, and medical's tricky because it's, one person could be blown up.
Sure, yeah.
We had drafted a policy, and I think maybe that is what went to the board in twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Was a policy basically outlining procedures in which people could apply for it and use it that met the standards of her will that she left with us for the trust. Um, and I don't think it ever went really any further than that.
No, it doesn't look like it.
I don't think so.
But, yeah, there, there was a chunk of money there that nobody really knows of.
Yeah. And do we have, do we have like our own food pantry in Rockport? Cause just cause it talks about the local food pantries providing food, et cetera, but that's not through us.
No, there's some in Rockland and one in the other.
So if people need assistance and they come, so they would come to the town office in this scenario to use general assistance?
That's right.
And it would be like putting them in the, the hotel or something like that, is that typical?
Or if they need food, they get, um, a voucher that they take to Hannaford for a certain amount, and then Hannaford bills us for whatever their groceries were. Um.
My wife is on a committee that gives the gloves money and they just give it away.
They have to give two dollars a year away.
You have to be fifty-five years or older, and I've talked to Diane about it. Uh, they'll pay taxes, fuel, and food. So, uh, there's not a lot of hassle to it, uh.
So I'm almost eligible for your name, just a couple more months.
I did think the same thing, just so you know, I was like, okay, I'm almost there with that, that's great.
Anyway, it will be, it, well, it, it, it's a way to eat some of the burden in the office. Cause all I gotta do is come in and say a little call. And they call my wife and children, they're like, I'm gonna be right.
We also have PennQuiz come every summer and do like, um, heating fuel and, uh, enrollments and things like that. So that it's more accessible to people in Rockport. Um, and PennQuiz usually does a pretty good job advertising of our, I can't believe the number of people that come in here days that we have
Really?
to sign up for that. So, um, we do try to offer those services here for people to use.
And I do see that, you know, and we know housing is a problem, right? So rental mortgage assistance, et cetera, has gone up. So it's, it's getting used then, right? Like the budget is getting used for these items.
The problem is, is you don't know, you know, you don't know what you're going to, it's a bit of a garden.
Right, right.
And this is one, so this is, so we get seventy percent reimbursement for every dollar we do.
Okay.
So the state will give us back seventy cents on the dollar, however, you know, we can spend as much as needed. So by state law, we set a budget, but really it doesn't really matter what we say about this budget. Because if things went really bad or good or whatever, uh, we have the right to just spend as needed and get reimbursed.
And get reimbursed.
So it's sort of, uh, we have the right to overspend our budget regardless. Um, but obviously you wanna have some expectation of what that thirty percent exposure that we have, uh, might be.
The other hard part is, is that there was so much, uh, assistance available during COVID
Yeah.
that it's really hard to look at what the last few number, like last few years have been. Because the state was just like pouring money to people for rental assistance, for food assistance, for fuel assistance. That people weren't coming in here because the state was providing them enough money, and though the applications never went through us, they went directly to the state.
But when the spigot turned off.
Then they came.
They came back.
And that's a five thousand here before eight hundred and three.
From last year.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, we have that conversation this fall about
Right.
that program ended, the ERA program ended. And then I think almost all of that is directly from those, those applications and.
We got inundated.
And I would say in the last few months, we've issued probably around five thousand dollars for the front office to be next. Like, it's just one after another.
Do they have to be a Rockport resident, or can they just?
Residency's a funny thing. Yeah, if you're here.
You're a resident.
You're a resident.
Yeah.
But if you're not here, so if you're sleeping in the parking lot
Yeah.
at Walmart in your car, you're rotten. And we'll send you over there because that's, that's where you live.
I think so.
Well, that's right, it's Thomas.
Yeah, Thomas.
Right, I'm still thinking, oh, that's a big.
There's so much abuse of that system, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
With the motel just south of the Red Field.
Yeah.
I mean, they were, they were being.
Very familiar with that motel.
They were being billed out, uh, it's like three thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
It went crazy.
Per person.
Yes.
Per room.
Yeah.
And the state was paying.
The state was paying.
Without even, without even giving a, wow, check of what it is.
So then when the state stopped paying that and they come here and they want us to pay three thousand dollars a month for like.
Nope. Good question here. Um, on the regular, we sort of, we've spent to date forty-eight ninety-three.
Yep.
And you've only put four thousand, you know, cut it, so shouldn't you?
Well.
Shouldn't that be five, just to at least cover what we've already paid for this year?
Well, I was making the argument that part of what we saw was related to, um, the end of this one program. So what we've spent thus far this year is a little bit of a misnomer because of, because of that.
Yeah.
Now, subsequently, we've had, we have had some claims, but it was this, this issue where we had twelve, twelve residents of a particular location that Mark might have referenced that all came in who hadn't paid three thousand, and we didn't pay that rate, obviously, the math didn't work out, but, um, as emergency, we had to just simply write a check. So it's, it's a little bit of a, it doesn't, it's, it doesn't really fit this. But over the last two, three months, we've had a number who have come in, so. And could the number move above four thousand? Yes.
We do have some generous residents, I think, who
Yep.
have offered, needed to make donations.
Well, that was what I was gonna ask about the use of the donated funds, what, what do we have left after we used to do forty-five or so?
Wait a minute.
Yeah, so we've got.
You can ask for more if you.
You could offset that.
And every, you could, you people can donate specifically to that type of.
Yeah.
Um, updating.
And the state is also pretty much, uh, telling us to go above the limits that they've set. That if somebody needs assistance, that we just need to pay it and it'll be figured out later.
So, yeah, I, I used to do GA.
I knew tax program, but they haven't fully done this.
Got it. Like the first, like, thirteen, fourteen years of being an administrator, whatever, I did GA all these towns. And it was, it's a very strict program, and you had to follow the rules, and you can't pay over this, and you can't do this. After COVID, everything changed. And basically, everybody's an emergency, and for the first-time applicants, basically, just write the check. That's what the state's guidance is to GA, just write the check.
Yeah, I'll be in tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll come in for mine tomorrow.
Okay, thanks. So, it's different.
Well, I think it's great that it's there for people that need it.
Yeah.
Good program.
So what else for questions on GA?
Moving on, top top.
All right, county. We're, we're rounding the bend, everybody, we're rounding the bend. So they're up sixteen percent. Part of that is due to the, the actual county budget, which was thirteen point.
Thirteen point zero.
Yeah, thirteen. But our tax, our, our valuation puts us up relative to other county towns to a different spot, so that's part of the sixteen point three. Um, and the dispatch, the overall dispatch budget is.
Seventeen.
Sixteen eight.
Yeah, so that's still, I would say, a ballpark is this overall number, so, in any event, they saw maybe the same issues we saw, staffing, wages, benefits, that's what's driving most of this. Um, these were social services drove a lot of this. And the continued inability for the state to take accountability for the jail system, that's part of this as well, so.
Is that how it's typically done in other states? The state runs the jail system?
Well, yeah, different states have different relationships with the counties. I mean, you go down out west and then down south, the, the county is the thing.
Well, I know that with the municipality and county, but in terms of the.
The county's running.
I mean, is that something we should be working with Vicky Bedera on?
Yes, yes, we should.
I've already asked to, I've already brought it up to her, and I said, I think the state really needs to take over these county jails. Since it's more consistent and the funding is from the state level and the taxpayers individually aren't paying for it, and she kind of was like, oh.
She might have a thought.
Yeah, I don't think she had considered it.
It's brutal.
So, yeah, because I brought that up to her about a year ago, and I said, this just doesn't seem right that we're doing it this way, and then they, I said, and the state would have better ability to hire the medical staff and move the guards around as necessary, more than the county, because a lot of the budget from the previous year was the medical contract expired. But now they don't have the, the economies of the buying power, it was the state doing it for all of the facilities. Regardless, we're just, one, power isn't big enough.
Right.
So that's what my, my point was coming from, was I think we could get the cost down if the state took over the jail system. So I think we do need to keep digging our, Senator Ann B B center, right? Or is that what it is? Yeah, I don't know, we do need to do something about it, I think if more people brought it up, it might, it might make a dent.
Yeah, I haven't heard of this issue before.
But I did, did bring it up a year ago to her, so.
Would the, the corrections want to take it on? Because maybe they would.
Well, they have to be under the, they, they're under the umbrella of one and double.
Yeah.
Under the umbrella.
Right, but if they thought it was useful to kind of get that, they might.
I, I don't, I don't know, I just, I thought I had heard or read somewhere that the state had been considering it, so I just kind of brought it up, saying, I read this, you know, is that true, you know, it's not really something they should be looking at, because, I mean, you're killing us on the taxes just running a jail. I mean, that's where the bulk of the money goes, a lot of the salaries and that, medical costs of maintaining that are just outrageous. And I think the state would have a better ability to bring those contracts into line across the board.
Does each county have a jail?
Yeah, every county.
And I wouldn't assume all of them, but I should say most of them.
Right, sheriff's responsible, Constitution says sheriff's responsible for the jail. But some counties, so for example, Saginaw Hawk and Lincoln share the Twin Bridges jail in the Scasset, Golic, Scass. There is, so, about eight years ago, ten years ago, the state tried to consolidate jails, the jail system. And the process made a mess, I mean, a greater mess out of it than they already had before. They put caps on the amount of money that they can actually use to fund the jails. They don't let counties spend more, you can only spend so much, but they won't reimburse, it, it's a, they, they, they've created this huge problem, that there's neither local control of jail, nor is there adequate funding to support what little, what control they don't have of the system. So at the end, there's sort of these orphaned products of each county, which are the most expensive portions of the county budget in every county in the state. And every county's different, I mean, so Twin Bridges is a relatively new jail, our jail is somewhat, uh, you know, in good shape. Walden County's been, I've been trying for decades to build a new jail, they couldn't get any traction because it's such a mess, the whole system, so. Yeah, Eric, keep talking, see Vicky, let her know, I mean, this is.
Keep bringing it up, it's a big problem.
MMA should be advocating for?
And they have them, they've been with, the County Commissioners Association has been looking to MMA to say, join us, and we have, um, but.
But if Vicky doesn't, it sounds like she doesn't.
It's a huge cost. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of thought she took it like it was something like she hadn't heard of or considered, but I know a lot of her focus tends to be on environmental issues and coastal issues and.
People want feel-good issues, gentle talk is not a feel-good issue.
Yeah, but it sucks up a lot.
It's a budget issue, though.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on, moving on, moving on.
I'm talking about the school, this is, this is a low-cost item.
Nothing we can do about it.
We have some pretty good estimates here in terms of where we stand right now.
Yeah, but I mean, on the ballot.
So we're looking at three point seven for the SAD, six point two for the CSD. A dollar education's only a seven percent increase, but that's such a small budget, it's, it's really minimal impact for us. So, uh, that's, uh, this is the one area where Camden's values are helping us, uh, because they're growing a little bit more than we are, so they're, they get to take a little bit bigger bite of the apple.
They use this thing, Rubric, um, for the school, I'm trying to think from my days on school board, it's giving me that there's a slightly different formula in that, so the question is going to be, does Camden pay more in county taxes as well, because there's not any.
Yes, relative to.
Right, but, but the, the school formula is, is a little bit of this, a little bit of that, whereas county strictly net value as of this day.
Right, because you have the per pupil EPS formula numbers that dictate that, and of course, that's part of how we ended up in.
With that.
Agreement where they, we were overpaying for a number of years, and, and that's still part of the mix, and so we're still, our number is, I guess, sort of artificially low, although they're working, basically Camden's working off the debt that.
Right, it should be like ninety thousand or something.
Ninety-three.
I'm gonna more years.
If that happens in Camden, oh.
Ten years or seven years.
Now you're getting it here.
Great, this will be their third payment.
Oh, how many?
Seven.
A total of ten?
Yeah.
It was only seven years?
We, I think, I think they'd try to stretch it out longer if we wanted it sooner, I think.
I don't know, I'd have to look, it was seven or five.
Seven.
But they're only on the third.
Little ways to go, but ninety thousand over the course of, uh, almost twelve million of them. Yeah, but it's something, it's something.
So speaking of, of monies, where, what's the deadline for the rest of the ARPA money that we have?
I mean, we're to make decisions on refunds by, I think it's May of twenty twenty-four. We have another year, and then, and then, yeah, to spend it by twenty-six.
I just don't want us to recite it.
Trust me, we have it.
Just three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, or a hundred, whatever.
We got some qualifying projects coming up, just say that.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Want to go debt?
Yep.
Let's go into debt in the red.
Three thirty-three.
So we put in, um, a modest amount here for, um, a bond anticipation note uh, for what's brought from Fire Station, that's seventy-five hundred dollars, it's not, obviously, what the annual bond payment would be for, uh, a new Fire Station, but effectively, it's that sort of, it's the amount to cover the interest-only portion of that, and also expect that there may be some avenues to not have to draw as much as quickly, um, using existing reserves or, you know, something of that nature. Um, so we've only put seventy-five hundred aside in that regard. Overall, our debt payments are decreasing, we're sort of working down, obviously, we try to get to decreasing debt payments, so that way, work we've already completed is costing us less than what it does today, as it depreciates, it sort of seems like a wise approach. Using six point nine percent, we're allowed full debt, so we don't load debt load, um, we don't want to amplify that. That's, that's a good, I mean, it's more of our tax dollars that are going to pay for things that we're currently doing and using and funding, this is.
So using the crystal ball, and a number that we won't know exactly for the Fire Station, you know, minus whatever we may be able to contribute towards it, what, what is a million six bond moving process?
What, what the annual, the annual now debt payment for that?
Let's just say it was two point six, and we come up with a million and put it towards it, and we had to do a bond for a million six.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, you know, something we need to think about for the future, because we've got, I mean, we've got an unknown amount of money that we may end up paying Camden if they're successful. You know, we've got eighteen million for sewer if we build one, we've got thirteen million if we have to go to Rockland. You know, there's a lot of stuff that we have out in the wind that we need to bear in mind.
Going to do the thirteen or eighteen.
Right, well, no, it's easy, it's thirteen if we go to Rockland, eighteen if we do our home, four or a couple hundred thousand if we have to pay Camden to get in there good raises. And still pay the eighteen or the thirteen. So, I mean, there's a lot of stuff we got to think about, and even if we do it, we're still gonna have to help them operate their system.
Yeah, still helps and that's.
Right, they have a fifty million dollar project upgrade up there that will go online in their, their fees in two years.
I guess that's, you know, in my mind.
Everybody builds something.
I mean, I know we're getting towards the end of the presentation for the budget, but when it comes time for us to think about it, we have these other unknowns.
We have an Opera House bond that, essentially, that's the whole.
Yes, I just noticed.
Uh, so if we bonded one point six million, uh, their estimated interest rate started off, it's four point two seven percent. The, for, when I do this, I typically do level principal payments, because we pay less interest over time. Uh, the principal payment would be about fifty-three thousand, three hundred dollars, and then, uh, the interest would reduce the first year, first payment's an interest-only payment, so that fiscal year would only be forty-three thousand. The next fiscal year would be a hundred and thirty-six thousand, and it decreases from there to fifty-four thousand.
Oh, one point six.
One point six.
And that, so, and there again, and that goes back into, for every hundred thousand, you put your budget up, what does that do in the middle?
Right.
Hundred thousand, ten thousand.
Right.
So this is just, this, this is just for that one, that one item.
Right.
Not taking into account any other increases in the upcoming years.
Yeah, yeah.
You're a customer.
Yeah, this may be a dumb question, I'm not an accountant, these are fixed interest rates on the bonds, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, I mean, we'll go out, if, if this, if the voters were approved, just to lay out that process, the voters were approved in June, board approved a contract presumably in July, this is best, best case scenario, right, for this to happen. Which would, November, no, but it would be May, right?
We'd go for the fall bond issue, which means our application would have to be in by the end of August, and then we'd actually receive the funds February, March-ish.
But that's, and, and so the seventy-five hundred, in that case, that's okay.
The next option would be to do the spring issue, which means we'd have to have the application in by like the first of December, and then we'd get it in the summer.
So bonds are in the rolling, uh, rolling, pretty good.
Clean water SRF bonds are, which is what we would use for wastewater, general resolution bonds, which is what we use for, uh, buildings and such, are not. They're fixed, a spring issue and a fall issue. Which is why we would need to use a bond anticipation note to cover the timeframe between when construction actually starts to when we receive the bond.
And how much time is there, Jonathan, between the time that we're anticipating to find out how much this is going to cost us and the deadline for us to put a warrant together?
A week.
So, you know, and where I'm going with that is if it comes back and it's three point five million, for some outrageously high number, we don't have much time for it on the June ballot. Okay, just checking.
Your only other option would be a special election.
Yeah, that would be the next way to go. On the other, and then, and then, I mean, this has been operating on the idea that the voters would like to know exactly what they're voting on in terms of the number, rather than, we're gonna approve, we think the budget's gonna be here and then go out the bid, which is what the bidders want to do.
Right, so, so there again, I mean, I, initially it was one point eight, I've heard two point six.
Yeah.
So, I just don't want us to be put in a corner to have to make a quick decision based on a, a number that we don't even know yet. I mean, you know, I mean, I, the special election might be in order, I don't know, that may be, it was to me, but I don't want us to be constrained with just a week for such an important decision.
Yeah, something that doubles.
I'll let you, you, this three of you to make a decision, and twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent gets you an answer, I mean, that's the beautiful part of it, so. I mean, that's, that's the best we can do with the situation we have in terms of when all the, everything was done and, and to be able, that doesn't mean you have to, you can choose to do an August special election, or, you know.
Yeah, we'll just have to see.
You gotta see what you gotta do.
I just, I don't, that's why I asked how much time we have between the bids there and us having to have something to bring for the warrants.
Well, that's, and that's why I'm gonna have them come in, have Amanda Austin come in and, and Jason come in on Monday's night, so they can go through what's in the bid packet and what's being asked of bidders, and so at least, um, it's been, they came to us last fall with, you know, before some of this was put together, so it would, you know, they'd come to the board and talk about these things, and so this is sort of the.
As I said, we haven't really had any updates or anything, and since then, I don't believe.
Nothing's really changed since, other than making the plans and building the bid packet. I mean, the, the cost issues that we're talking about, well, there's three hundred added square feet from the initial draft of what you looked at probably a year ago. Um, the big thing we're talking about is the cost per square foot, and there's nothing that.
Three hundred is for the area.
No, no, it's, it's, it's the day room and, and it's on that back side of the building, but, but, you know, again, the six to eight hundred dollars a square foot is what's driving this.
You don't know how many square foot there is, I'm talking it, but that's what Bill, Bill got.
Bill, yeah.
Bill Lane was telling me that they're six to eight hundred per square foot.
Yeah, so that's scary number, yeah, that's the scary number. Do you want?
It's gonna be a nice looking parking garage inside.
Maybe we'll build it out of sticks and twigs, get some vevers to build it for us. Adobe from the southeast, I mean, southwest.
It's kind of, the current building kind of has that, that kind of southwest flavor to it, the flat building, flat roof.
So hit me with some special assessments.
Special assessment. All right, tax billing, we've got some increased revenue sharing coming our way. So we budget for that. And then, got aside fund balance. So I put aside three eighty. That's roughly the amount we put in. So. I'd like to get us off of that number. I'd like this to lean down from that number.
I literally heard you say the same thing last year.
I would. I also didn't have, expect we'd have the numbers we have in this budget, so.
I suspect we'll help you.
Yeah, do we know? We don't yet know what our revenue sharing.
The, that number is the state projected number.
Yeah.
The four sixty and then now the five hundred.
The five hundred.
The five hundred, yeah.
Got to bite the bullet sometime.
I know, but seven point eight was a scary number. That number goes up every, you know, every dollar we use less of that fund balance. You know, and that's, and that's the issue is that we're, you know. If we weren't putting in more than, we were putting in more than we took in, I'd be more concerned. So we're, we're stasis in terms of what. Where we are, but. I, I, that was, I, I'd like to use it last. I'd like to be where we were last year or lower personally. But that means balancing all the other things. We either cut spending or we see, you know, we figure a different way to get there. And so. Three eighty got us to a seven point eight number, and I was like, that's, we'll leave it there.
What, so where are we trending for the actual accounting? Like, will we go down or up this year?
Up. We're up. We're.
How, how much are we up even this time period? Do you have it in?
Uh, for the fiscal year that's being audited right now, we're projecting it to go up. About a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, and that is totally because of increased revenue sharing. We collected a lot more revenue sharing than was anticipated. From the year that we're operating in right now. Uh, I think that we're going to like break even because we have a lot of expenses at the library that aren't covered. We have a lot of expenses at the opera house. We've had other breaks in other places, so I think that that. Will put us pretty much under that budget.
How many days are we at the undisputed or undersigned fund balance?
Uh, we are.
Forty-five or so?
We are actually pretty good. We are at, our target is. GFOA standards are you have sixty days, up to sixty days of undersigned fund balance. The board, when they rewrote the undersigned fund balance policy, set it to twenty percent, which is slightly less than that. And with even taking out the three hundred and eighty thousand, we would be at twenty percent.
So that's, how many days?
That's following the policy.
Okay, all right.
That's what, that's where three eighty came from, is that's following the policy. Now, we hope to increase the policy. That was the other part of this last year. And somebody may remember that. We talked about wanting to get to ninety days. Ninety days. But we weren't there, we weren't quite there yet. So the board changed the policy to twenty percent. And so that's where three eighty came from, is following the policy. So. What's next? Select Board, well, not really at the town office. On Zoom land, Select Board will be. Tomorrow night, develop a proposed budget. Then that budget will be forwarded to the Budget Committee to create recommendations that will come back to the Select Board. And then, if necessary, the April third, the Select Board will meet to discuss budget committee recommendations, if there are any, and approve their final budget. Then there's room on the fourth that the Budget Committee wants to come back, if there's more sort of back and forth. To review the Select Board changes. So basically this back and forth and back and forth thing. The April tenth meeting is the last, is when the budget, when the warrant is set. And that's when. That will be there when, when the warrant is done. And then on the twelfth, Budget Committee will meet once again, and they'll do the recommendation votes on all the articles. So. This is, from this point on, pretty much, well, not pretty much, this point on, everything is like motion, second. Debate, discussion, all in favor territory, right? This is when it's about making those motions, making decisions on these various line items. So the best way all of us can get through this in one piece is for all of us to be able to, to work in that, that world. So. I know that we've sat through three nights of these. We had the one before that where we talked sort of broadly about the whole budget. But the only way that we're going to get as quickly through all this, and, and I know we want a good result, but. Speed is also important. For those of us who are at that meeting, that budget meeting, last year was eleven thirty or whatever it was. Speed's important because obviously it gets hard to make decisions later to get to. So motions, seconds, discussion, vote, move on. That's how it's all done.
Question about the twelfth. What is the timeframe for you to get the information from the twelfth? The printers?
Two.
That Friday.
And, and that's assuming that you have a forum of your Budget Committee.
There would have to be a forum.
Right. And I won't be here on the twelfth. Nothing's a big deal, but you just need to make sure you get everybody else here to be able to do that. Because if you can't, then you're pushing against that deadline in the first.
Yeah, no, that's, that's very right. And, and, but just, I don't, I'm not trying to be. Argumentative or, or anything of the sort, but. This process, you know, the, the way the process is set up is the Select Board writes the budget, the Select Board puts together the warrant. The Select Board sets the rules of how the, how that's being decided. And how the budget's presented. The Charter provides the Budget Committee the opportunity to comment on that budget. So, you know. Though we go through this and we, and everybody's input and, and everything is valid and valuable. And, and I think the comments we've had tonight will certainly inform the Select Board's, you know, consideration and discussion of the budget. There are different roles here for everyone. And so I don't want anyone to, to be disappointed or, or, or just. Feeling out of place in this discussion because unfortunately, what, what, that can happen, but realistically. These five will go off, they're going to set their budget, and then these nine will go off, and they're going to say, we like it, we don't like it. But more importantly, the parts we don't like or the parts we do like, there are specific recommendations, specific things. Let's say that's for the Budget Committee, that you wish for them to consider and discuss. Those motions, seconds, votes, that's the way that process will happen. And, and they're valuable because last year, there were four recommendations from the Budget Committee, and the Select Board went through them one by one and, and discussed them and. You know, dealt with that one. So. Yeah, great.
I didn't see an LD one in here this year.
Well, yep, that could be. The LD one is, is the, the orphan child of, of state government that seemingly no one is following. We can do a calculation to tell you where we are versus where we are, but without any enforcement, there is. Seemingly no role for LD one other than to simply say it's a measure. It's a measure like every other measure that we could provide, so.
And it's technically state law, so we should always know what we're up on.
The problem right now is that the board needs to make a decision on whether they're doing like a statistical update in terms of values. Or what's going to happen in terms of updating our current values, because that has a significant impact on what that LD number is. So for us to assume what our growth is without knowing that direction yet, it's not helpful.
I think we addressed that a few years ago, where they always used to ask the question of the voters about LD one. At the tail end of the voting, the warrant articles, empty voting. Approved everything else, so.
It, it is state law, but in twenty years of state law, it's never been used, followed for, I think Rockport has followed it probably more than any other community I've ever heard of.
And that's part of that?
And that's not maybe not a bad thing. Maybe it's a measure that's a good measure. Maybe it's not. I'll let you all decide what's good or bad, and we can do that calculation though, to provide that.
I mean, I think it'd be helpful just to see where we are against it. I don't, I don't think it's true that we've never got, like, ever looked at. I looked at it pretty closely my first year on the committee.
Oh, I'm not saying it hasn't been looked at. No, 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 I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is. State law was created to create LD one as a cap, and then no one else followed it. And the only people that, the, the only time I ever heard a discussion about LD one was here. County never followed it, the state never followed it, the schools consolidated, they don't follow anything like it.
Because they know they couldn't run their budgets, but they did.
Exactly.
I mean.
Right.
Here, you can spend a hundred dollars, but your budget's a thousand, so.
Right. And so there's no calculation, there's no beliefs for it.
Yeah.
If there was beliefs for it, then I'd, you know, I'd be.
So is that, is that never something that we'll have when?
I think once you guys decide Monday night what you're doing in terms of, right, Monday night, the statistical update or not. I mean, if we're gonna do a statistical update to get everybody to ninety-four percent, that obviously has a big impact on what our growth is and what that growth factor is. So in order for us to figure out what the LD number, LD one number is, we first need to figure out what our projected growth is.
And when you stay, if you don't do that, when you stake money on the table.
Right.
We don't need.
But we can't really run the LD one calculation until we can somehow estimate what our growth is going to be. So our growth is either going to be what permits have been taken out, and that's it, or our growth is going to be what permits have been taken out plus the statistical update, which is obviously going to have a big impact on the LD one number.
Well, maybe we can run it at where we are today and then. Come up with some reasonable, like, where we think we're going to be valued. I don't know how hard that is.
I can work on it. Well, Kerry's at a state board hearing. I will have it for tomorrow because Kerry's at a state board hearing, but I can work on it Monday and send it out.
So maybe we can get your meeting Thursday, or Tuesday, Tuesday, fourteen, get back together.
So the.
Maybe calculate it both ways.
The meeting tomorrow is a, is a Zoom meeting. The fourteenth is a Budget Committee meeting. Do we, we have it here or we don't have it in the library?
Yeah.
Okay. But Select Board meetings, we start to have. On the, is the library?
At the library. What's that?
At the library.
Monday. Yep.
Fourteenth is here.
Oh, we're meeting on Monday's meeting is at the library.
And it's live in person, I think you're not running.
The fourteenth is here.
That's it.
So tomorrow is Zoom all in or is it not?
I'm going to go. We're good?
Please come and sit with me. You can do that. You can do that every day.
You see me right across from her?
Uh-huh, I did.
Trying to play it. Yeah, trying to play it off like it didn't happen.